Arlene, are you ready?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, I'm calling to order. Regular meeting, Board of Directors, Monterey, Monterey Water Management District for Monday, October 19, 2020, and is 5:04. May we have roll call, please?
Yes.
Director Adams.
Sorry.
Director Adams?
Here.
Director Byrne?
Here.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Evans?
Here.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Here.
And Director Riley? All present.
Thank you. May we all please stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Mine.
And to the republic which sustains. One nation, under God. Individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, do we have any additions and corrections to the agenda?
Chair? I would like to make a motion that we move the final EIR to a special meeting to be held at a later time.
Okay, I have a motion out there to have what item was that?
Item 3.
Oh, second.
Excuse me, it would be to have item number nine. Consideration of final EIR for the potential acquisition of the Monterey Water System and district boundary adjustments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remove item nine to a special meeting discussion.
Discussion, please.
Yes, go ahead, Director Riley.
I'm curious about what the reason is. It seems like this is kind of a pro forma, a per report. I don't know of any particular issues that need special attention. I'm just curious what the rationale might be.
Director Riley, I did not have a chance to get through all 380 pages of my board packet and all 430 pages of this document. I got this far. So I would like to be prepared. I think this is a very big decision to be made by this board, and I wanted to be prepared to make it, and I was not able to finish that document. So I would concur with that.
So if I could just inquire of the motion itself, is it to the next meeting or to a special meeting?
To a special meeting to be held within the next two weeks.
Oh, no, no, no.
Chair Edwards, I said within the next two weeks.
It could be Thursday. Would you be ready by Thursday?
I will be ready by Thursday. I will be ready by Thursday. Yes, Chair.
Yeah, Chair Edwards, I would concur with Director. This is a. Actually, under.
Director Hoffman, I can't hear you. You're breaking up.
It's our responsibility under. The document.
Director Hoffman, you're breaking up. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I think you've had connectivity issue this week. To the benefit of the rest of the board, Director Hoffman was speaking to the responsibility of each board member to feel comfortable they've had sufficient time to thoroughly review a secret document and make an informed decision. And I think that's close to nod if we're in the right ballpark.
Okay, Director Hoffman, take your mic off and mute. Okay, grab talk now.
Well, I think to characterize it, if people can hear me now, that's where I was getting at, and it's our responsibility to do that. And I have not either had a full opportunity to review the full text of the document in a short period. Thank you.
Okay, I had this sent out as soon as I can, and y'all should have had it about seven, about six to seven days now, but y'all don't feel comfortable with it. I'm not going to support the motion because we need to move this on. But if you got four votes out there, continue it, and that special meeting is going to come up fast. I'm telling you that now. So start reading if you got to stay up late at night. Start reading because that meeting is going to come up fast, I'm telling you. Okay.
And so, Director Edwards, what's the big rush? I mean, I'm not understanding why the big push for the document. So if some information would be provided to give us some sense that need, that'd be appreciated.
Because we want to get it to LAFCO as soon as we can. That's why the big rush. We had this document worked on for about several months now, and it finally got to the board. I'm not trying to rush it to the board, but I send it out instead of you getting it three or four days, I send it out as soon as I could get our hands on it, as soon as the general manager can make sure that we can get this document. So.
Well, I appreciate that, but I concur with Molly and Director Hoffman. It's a lot of information in this one agenda, so I agree with the motion.
Okay. Any other board members before I take this out to the public for comment? Okay, Arlene, you have some new instructions for the public to raise their hand. Let's take it out to the public for two minutes.
If anyone would like to present public comment, please use the raised hand icon. If you are calling in and using only your phone, please press star three on your phone. I do see some raised hands. Paul Bruno, please present your comment.
Thank you. Good evening, directors. I want to speak in support of the motion. What you have before you is very serious item. There's a lot of information, a lot of information is presented not that long ago, and you really need to have your head wrapped around it in order to make this decision. So it's very wise to delay it and not rush it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anna Thompson, please present your comment.
Well, is this comment just on the motion or is it about anything? Because I just logged on, so I don't know.
It's on a motion to continue item nine, I believe it is. That's all.
Oh, okay, sorry then. I don't have anything to say other than there's no, I think we should go ahead and do it as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you are calling in, please press star three on your phone. Susan Shaboni, please present your comment.
Hi, I think everybody here has been awaiting this and really would like to see it voted on tonight, but if there are sufficient board members who feel they need another couple of days, I think Thursday would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a caller. Please present your comment. Please present your comment. I have a caller, and I've unmuted you, so please present. Please present your comment.
I'm not sure if you're talking about me, but good evening. I concur with the idea to move quickly with this agenda item number nine, if possible. You know, I don't see a problem with it in a couple of days, but I think it should move forward as soon as possible. I think there's been sufficient time to manage the materials, but a couple of days did not make a big difference, but a couple of weeks might be a little bit too much. Thank you. Please, I know you're hardworking, but there's a lot of material.
Thank you.
Any other callers? Please press star three. I see no other raised hands.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Director Adams?
Wait one second. Director Riley, you have a comment? Director Riley, take your mic off. You're on mute.
Okay. I had a quick question. Is that me?
I think that's you.
No, I.
Okay. I don't understand. I'm only, I'm only.
Do you have a cellphone? Do you have anything else on besides your computer?
No, it's only the computer.
I think you're fine now. I've muted some other callers, so please continue.
I've.
Director Riley.
My question is if the argument for item nine is not enough time, is there going to be another motion to move number 10? I'm just curious about the ones that are feeling like they need more time. If this is only the one motion, then that's what I'm curious about, because if we're going to postpone the entire major part of the agenda, I have some real problems.
Director Riley, I only heard item nine.
Director Riley?
That's all.
Director Evans? I only, I only made the motion for number nine. I have gotten through the rest of the board packet. I did not have enough time to complete the EIR. That is why I made the motion for number nine.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Adams, you have your hand up. Take your mic off. You got your mic on mute.
Thank you. You know, I think if there are enough, several directors who feel like they want to have a little bit more time in order to feel comfortable and confident in presenting their opinions on the issue, I would rather go ahead and give them that leeway rather than to just feel like we've got to rush it through and then have several directors who are feeling that they aren't ready for this. So I will be able to support the motion as long as we're able to do it by the end of this week, I think. And I believe Molly said she could be ready by Thursday or so. So it's not, I feel like we're not postponing it until infinity. We've got to date certain.
Thank you, Director Adams. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We had discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
And Director Edwards?
No.
Motion passes six one.
Okay, on that item, be prepared. You'll begin to notice pretty soon. It's going to come fast. Thank you.
On the agenda, I believe we're pulling item number four on the consent calendar.
We haven't got there yet.
Okay.
I know we want to hurry up today. Okay.
Chair Edwards, I'd like to pull item number 10.
We're not there yet. We're not there yet.
I thought we were doing changes to the calendar to the agenda.
Okay, we had item one change. You want to pull number 10 on that? What's your question on item number 10?
I have an extensive document, and I have not had a chance to thoroughly review that document. I've had three days to look at 200, 300 pages, and that's inadequate to adopt something. And so I think that it needs more time, and if it's combined with the special meeting for the EIR, I'm comfortable with that, but in three days doing both documents, it seems a bit unreasonable.
Okay. Is that a motion to pull item number 10?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Director Potter. Okay. Before we start discussion, I want to take it out to the public. Arlene, open that up to the public about pulling item number 10 from this agenda.
I see a caller. Please present your comment. Caller, did you have a, do you have a comment on this item? Okay, I'm going to mute that mic. Michael Bear, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did.
Please make your comment. Yes, please make your comment.
Hi, I just, I just got in, and I didn't make comment on the first motion too about items nine and 10. These are our big documents, and I definitely think it's important for the directors to have the time to digest these very important documents. I just want to go back to the 10,000-foot view. My understanding is these documents will be going to LAFCO, and that board is made up of people who may not, who have in the past on other places not been particularly found way to the idea of public water and to take, you know, the pro Cal-Am. So LAFCO appears to me to potentially be a roadblock, and if I were Cal-Am, I would certainly be working behind the scenes as much as possible to have influence on that board. And so it's fine that, you know, if you take an extra two or three days and, you know, have a special meeting on Thursday, that's great, but I think we need to know who we're dealing with with LAFCO and what their response is going to be. It may require, it may go smoothly, or it may be as big a deal as a coastal condition. And there's a lot of people willing to, you know, talk to LAFCO people and, you know, hundreds of people I'm sure will be willing to comment if LAFCO is going to be a bottleneck. And what the issues are, I'm not exactly clear, so we got to find out what those are too. But the point is, this may take a while once you turn it over to them, and we need to find out sort of how their board is thinking and responding. So I think there's an urgency to keep the ball rolling and get it to them in a timely manner, though it is obviously critical that, you know, you guys, it is a, you know, huge documents to review and to take, you know, two more days is, you know, I totally support that too, just the way Mary said it, and so I support that. But we got to see and find out who these people are at LAFCO. So the only way to do that is to get them some work so we can start to see how they respond to the work. And that is my comment.
Thank you, sir.
Rick Hoyer, please present your comment.
Yes, Board, this is Rick Hoyer, president of Monterey Municipal Tax Payers Association. Not only, the board only have three days to review these documents, the public has only had three days to wade through all these documents as well, and I'm sure the members of the public would like to have a chance to read them, understand them, so they can substantively comment if they choose to on this matter. Three days for something of this size is crazy. Please postpone it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Karen Paul, please present your comment.
Yes, thank you. I want to express my support for the chair's point that the delay in considering items nine and 10 be no longer than necessary for the board members to have the time they need to complete their review of the agenda items. And to that, I would just like to add that this is if the EIR of item nine is a final EIR, the draft EIR has been out and presumably reviewed for a long time. There have been comments, so this is not a brand-new document for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Bruno, please present your comment.
Thank you. Once again, members of the board, I would encourage the postponement so that the public and the board has adequate time to analyze this, the matter before us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, would you like to make a comment? I see no other raised hands. Chair Edwards.
Thank you, Arlene. Back to the board. Discussion on that motion to delay item 10. Any other discussion on it?
So I was willing to go along with one, but now I know, so are we going to, next are we going to postpone the consent calendar? You know, I sort of agree with George Riley's comment when he said, you know, okay, we'll do one, but, you know, really, I'm not comfortable with this, quite frankly.
Thank you, Director Adams. Any other comments on this motion before we take the roll call vote? I want to support the motion. Spent my weekend reading this stuff. And it wasn't nice because I was missing football. But any other comments?
Chair, I do have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I do appreciate you getting the final EIR into our hands as quickly as possible, and I know that we have had board packets this thick that we have looked at in three days, but I feel I'm responsible to those residents in Monterey and then to the community as a whole to make sure that I understand them and make the right decision. If I didn't work, if I didn't have a job that was keeping me working 50, 60 hours a week, I would have more time to look at this. I don't, and so I am, I have put in as much time as I possibly could in looking at these, and I didn't get there. So I prioritize the board packet over the EIR. I feel comfortable enough to discuss number 10, but I also respect those that have not had the time because it was very difficult for me to get through even just the fact that I did. So I'm willing to support the motion and push this down to Thursday, and I will spend every bit of my free time getting prepared for this. But I just want to state that it is unfair to have that expectation that we can do this this quickly when we have other responsibilities.
Thank you, Director Evans. Any other comments from board members? Okay. Okay, Director Riley, get your hand up there. I can see you now.
Just quickly, I do think when, I kind of dread getting the board package every month just because I know what I'm going to have to do for the next few days. And I did. I mean, I went through both item nine and item 10, and I don't remember spending this much time previously ever. I mean, maybe in the beginning when I didn't know anything, but I do set aside the time, and I just, that's why I asked in item number nine, was there any suggestion that we're going to postpone number 10 as well? Because I was willing to do one and not two, and so I'm not going to support the motion.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call, general manager. You had a meeting with LAFCO, I think, tomorrow. Can you cancel that and change it?
No, we're going to meet on Wednesday. I think it'll be beneficial to have that meeting anyway. Just approval of both these. Just approval of both these items tonight wouldn't have made any difference for that meeting. We're trying to pull the, the final application together. There's a couple of items that can come in later. But because these two kind of go hand in hand with the application, you know, I don't think there's any harm in delaying both of them to the same date. It's just LAFCO is going to be the, the lengthiest part of the remaining schedule. And, and if it becomes strongly controversial, they may add a second hearing. So what we're talking about on Wednesday is basically where we're at, where they're at, what they're thinking the roadmap might look like as compared to when we met with them in February. So that meeting will go on and maybe it'll even help, uh, inform what we talk about on Thursday if that's the date.
Thank you. Okay, we want to move with the, with the vote now. Roll call vote on the motion.
Director Adams?
No.
Director Evans? Director Riley?
No.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Hi.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
And Director Edwards?
No.
Motion passes four, three.
Motion passes four, three. That item is moved to the special meeting coming up shortly. Thank you. Now we're going to move to oral communication. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar, information item, co-session item, or matters not listed on the agenda may do so only during oral communication. Please leave your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all of the items as they are presented to the board. Oral communication is open for three minutes.
If you are calling in, please press star three on your phone. If you, otherwise, please use the raised hand icon. Uh, caller, please present your comment.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, Tom Rowley calling on, uh, oral comments, um, today, October 19th. What I wanted to address was an item that was at last month's meeting. Approval of 3.7 million plus a cushion, uh, for overcharges or possible cost overruns for another injection well for the Pure Water Monterey Project. It seems like the cost, the total cost continues to grow on a, on a project that was hyped from day one as being the most cost effective project. It appears that, you know, it's not done, it's not at full, you know, it's in operation supposedly, but not up to speed. And that, my understanding is another injection well may be required in addition. When does this stop? I think it's time for, um, the, um, Water Management District in, in, in coordination with Monterey One Water to admit that this project has cost overruns. Again, the cost of pumping the water out and treating it has never been included in the cost to customers. It's been under, under, underestimated the true cost to customers since day one on the GWR Pure Water Monterey Project. I don't know why this is the case and I go back to something that the General Manager well knows. You know, 3.7 million, a few million here and a few million there, and pretty soon you're talking real money. We have gone past the point where we're talking real money. And I sure would have liked to have had a vote on whether the Water District had spent that money, but that's another story for another time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Riley?
Susan Scavoni, please present your comment. Hi, um, I just wanted to actually say that I was very happy to hear that Monterey One has been successful in, uh, scrubbing the, uh, injection wells and coming along on that project for repairing those two wells and the shallow wells. And things are looking like they'll be done by Christmas, Merry Christmas. And beginning on the other two wells, this project, even though the public may not know it, was originally planned to have all four of those deep injection wells. They were not built as a cost saving measure per apparently the PUC. So I don't see it as overruns. I see it as a brand new project that needs more work and it's a wonderful cooperative project that's won awards and I totally support it. So I'm happy to hear we've gotten to those milestones and I understand they also passed certification with the state. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Paul Bruno, please present your comment.
Uh, good evening. Just want to bring back a moment of history. Uh, this popped up today. 10 years ago today, I was part of a group that landed in a Chinook helicopter behind the, uh, dam. We landed on a silt mound and our goal that day was to convince the, uh, government officials who had flown up, flew in with us to get behind a public-private partnership to remove the dam. Well, that dam is now gone and the river flows freely. Um, it's the biggest environmental accomplishment that I've been a part of in my 19 years as a director on the Carmel River Watership Conservancy. That is a CalM success story. What happened is they brought in outside players, outside took down that dam and did so with, with, with money that, uh, didn't cost the rate payers, uh, as much as it could have. So I, I want to point out that point in history where there was a successful private-public partnership. Uh, I do believe in, uh, private enterprise and private companies and there's a success story right there. Thank you.
You. Marley Milton, please present your comment.
Oh, hi, I'm going to have to leave before the meeting is, is advanced to the, um, 9A, 10A, and 10B. But I wanted to compliment the staff and all of you on the board too, on all the work that's gone into, uh, preparing the EIR, the operations plan, and the content management plan. I actually took, took time. It's a lot of reading, but I, I read quite a few parts of it and I'm very impressed with the thoroughness and thoughtfulness of your work. And I hope that the, uh, board will act to approve, uh, all three of those. And, um, I'd also like to agree with Susan's comment on, on how nice it is to see the additional work on the Pure Water Monterey moving forward so successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, but we'll be hearing those articles again on another day. You haven't listened yet. Next, please.
Ms. Coppernall, did you want to make a comment?
Oh, yes, hello, thank you. Um, I would like to thank the, the board for the outstanding job they have been doing and are doing to support our community's efforts to work together towards solving our water supply issues. Your dedicated work and tireless efforts to develop the best workable plans as well as focusing on moving forward to implement those plans is indeed admirable and much appreciated by our communities. I congratulate you and admire you for the progress made to date and urge you not to stop short of complete success. Please consider the serious implications of M1W's continued actions to withhold SEIR certification. This failure to certify the SEIR will hamper progress or on fulfilling the community's desire to have a reliable, environmentally safe and affordable water supply for now and future decades. You have an opportunity to lighten the stress load and financial burden that this water issue represents, especially during this challenging time of COVID-19 health threat. Please consider the value of supporting our citizenry and looking out for the public good. This is a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers who funded the million dollar supplemental EIR. This is the best option to stop the illegal Carmel River water pumping and to ensure a potable water supply now without the complications of sticky litigation and unrealistic efforts to derail Pure Water Monterey expansion. So please listen to the voice of the people and move forward with your capacity and authority to support SEIR certification as well as appealing to LAFCO to proceed with the operational plan approval needed to press on. You are the heroes with the courage and strength of character and integrity to implement, implement the best and right now the only solution that can ensure a secure water supply for our future. Thank you for all the outstanding work you are doing for all our communities. God bless you all. I salute you and staff. Special thanks and bravissimo to Chair Alvin Edwards for his outstanding leadership and to General Manager David Stoltz for his integrity and genuine faithful adherence to truthful reporting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Karen Paul, did you want to make a comment? No? Okay, thank you, Karen. Um, your hand was still raised. I will mute you. Thank you. Anna Thompson, please present your comment.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. First of all, I second everything that the prior two, uh, speakers said, uh, the Ms. Scavoni and the, and the last one. I would also like to express my gratitude to the Chair, Directors, and General Manager for your letter, letter to the CCC in support of the Pure Water Monterey expansion. I appreciate your hard work, commitment, and strong leadership in providing us with the best solutions for our water supply requirements. Unfortunately, despite all the evidence to the contrary, some people still choose to believe CalM's false claims and continue to insist that CalM's proposed these as the only viable solution for meeting our future water needs. To address water shortages and to create a continuous supply of new water, all of Southern California has been developing and developing and implementing large water recycle projects. In fact, uh, uh, they are implementing, uh, developing multiple water storage projects as well to make sure that every drop of water is being saved and reused when needed. There are developing plans to use the, the biosolids waste from these projects to, into creating electric energy. So they are also very concerned about the amount of electricity that is being used and, and it goes in conjunction with the water. We need to, to be able to do both things. To reduce the energy because of climate change and also to, to save as much water as possible, recycling is the future. Uh, to, to address climate fluctuations that can affect water supply. In fact, the Irvine Ranch Water District considered purchasing water from Poseidon Resources at one point. And as a result of their analysis, they determined that ocean desalination is not cost effective, economic feasibility is not in line with the need. It uses too much energy and will require rate payers to pay for every ex, very expensive water, whether it's needed or not. A much better solution is to recycle and also to store water when it's plentiful so that it is available when needed. In any event, I'm short now, so, um, and now more than ever, I think when we, we climate change and the pandemic and everything else that's going on, it's imperative that we proceed with a water supply solution that is cost effective and environmentally friendly. Do whatever you need to do in order to make sure that we save our resources and, uh, and we work with the environment as well. Because if we don't have that, we don't have anything. So thank you for serving the best interest of our communities. I'm very appreciative to you all and especially to our General Manager, uh, because you have taken a lot of views that you don't deserve. You, you are, I appreciate your
Thank you, ma'am.
Honesty and everything. So thank you so much for the
Thank you. Call again.
Uh, Michael Bear, please present your comment.
Hi, uh, I'd first like to respond to, uh, Tom Rowley. Um, I know he's a leader in the Taxpayer Association, uh, and so I, I'm pretty sure he understands the difference, uh, between somewhat, something under 200 million versus 1.2 billion. But yeah, a million here, a million there, it does add up. But, uh, look at the alternative, Tom. It's five times more expensive. Uh, and I'd also like to, you know, thank Susan for pointing out what's happening with the injection, what was the process being made and the investment made by the Water District to, uh, to get that project going because it's our regional solution to water problems. A lot of people benefit from Marina, you know, to Carmel. Uh, so, uh, I just encourage you to continue to keep that idea in mind. A regional solution using public agencies to solve our water problems. The other thing I'd like to say is, you know, I'm calling from Santa Clara where I live now. You guys got any rain down there? We got no rain up here, no rain. I'm getting anxious, so I can't wait to hear Dave's, uh, executive report to find out if we got any rain, we need some rain. Thank you very much.
Sir. Amy Anderson, please present your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, I also want to agree with Susan Scavoni and the, the very good way that she pointed out what's been going on at Pure Water Monterey. Um, I don't know about the, the previous speaker who was complaining about it, but I don't know anybody or any project of that kind of size that doesn't have some hiccups. And it seemed to me that they got after it very quickly. And we want them to because we want that water injected into the ground. So I, I think they've done a marvelous job, um, working on the dam, uh, on the, uh, injection wells that they had problems with and planning to go forward with additional wells. Um, and, uh, no, Michael, we don't have any wa- we don't have any rain. Sorry. And thank you all for what you're doing. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Melody Chrislock, please present your comment.
Hi, yeah, um, you know, I sat in on the recycled water meeting at Monterey One the other day and it seems to me there's just been an awful lot of hand wringing over these initial issues that went on with the Pure Water Monterey Project. It was really amazing to hear their lead engineer say that after treating this, the final commissioning of deep injection well number one, that it was now injecting 900 acre, 900 gallons per minute, which is very close to what it was originally designed to do. And it may go higher than that, they said. So it looks like they're in good shape. Um, I wanted to put down something that was interesting from the Coastal Commission report on this whole issue of the community being, you know, some people want to make this out to be a real problem when it's not. So here's what the Coastal Commission was saying. These types of initial issues, as in the Pure Water Monterey issues, are not unusual for water treatment in desalination facilities as they must contend with and adjust to many different issues and concerns. For example, during its first year of operations, the Orange County Water District Round Water Replenishment System, one of the world's largest and most advanced, produced only about 55% of its expected yield in its first year. Similarly, the Carlsbad Desal plant produced less as well. But what happened after that first year was what we need to focus on. The Orange County project now has been running 100% of expected capacity for many years, according to their board. So I think we can look forward to great success with this project and have more confidence than we've had so far in Monterey One's engineers and their ability to deal with these initial startup problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Tynan, please present your comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Yeah, I do like the way the Chair runs a meeting, it's nice and tight. Uh, Eric Tynan with the Casterville CSD. It fortuitous that that last comment from, uh, Ms. Chrisock was about the Coastal Commission report, actually on page 110 of the report, it shows that Orange County only produced, it's only producing at 65%. I think it's on page 110 of its expected, what was its expected capacity? And, and Carlsbad is a, is a three-year average of 75%. Now granted, you know, Monterey One Water, you got some fine people doing some hard work there, just like you guys are. But you have to look at this over time and get a track record around it. You can't just start off saying, you know, oh, it's, you know, it's just, this thing's gonna work perfect. It's gonna work all the time. I know you have a hard decision to make. You guys are, you know, no good deed goes unpunished by being on a board. So, but, uh, I would, if you take your time and look at the Coastal Commission Report, I found tons of, I mean, 20, 30 spots where their, the information actually led to denial, they should have led to the denial of an expansion. But like I said, page 110 or 111, it talks about Orange County and Carlsbad, how they have not met expectations and if the expansion and the initial set with the same results as, um, I think it's Orange County, it wouldn't even make the 3,500. So good luck. And anyways, I know you got a lot of hard, hard decisions to make. So I do like the way you run a meeting. Thanks. Take care.
Thank you, sir.
John Tilly, please present your comment.
Thank you, Arlene. Thank you, Board members. Thank you, Molly, for your years of service. I want to say that I agree with Mr. Rowley. I think that the M1W project first phase is very unproven, both in terms of production and also in terms of cost. It's, I don't know how anybody can say that they understand what the cost of that project is going to be because it's just not yet proven. I also have to agree with Mr. Bear unfortunately that we desperately need rain. If we don't get rain and we don't have a sustainable project in place, then any failures or lack of water availability for the M1W and the Seaside Basin creates a house of cards in this community that could be extremely disastrous. So let's be real careful about how we look at these projects to make sure that we're working just with a particular intent or purpose other than the benefit of the community and even sustainable water supply in place. Again, thank you all, Board members, for your hard work.
Yes, sir.
Rudy Fisher, please present your comment.
Thank you, Arlene. So let me tell you something. I, I was on the board at Monterey One Water. I'm very excited about that project. And the idea of an expansion is, is very exciting to me also. If the MPWMD and Pure Water Monterey can put in other deep injection wells, we can probably get to the 3,500 acre feet and then beyond that in the future. But I want everybody to remember, we need those, those extra wells and any expansion is going to require more wells too. Because it's not so much the amount you recycle, it's how much you can actually put into the aquifer. So the additional 2,250 acre feet from the expansion would be, would be good. We have the right number and the right type of additional wells. But I strongly suspect that the action you're looking at tonight is not going to be as easy as it sounds, but I still think you should pursue it. You know, if, if your agency can become the, the lead agency in a couple of years and for less than 200 million, we can get our water problem solved for now and for a while. But I have to ask something, and that is, will this satisfy the state water resource control board requirements for us to get off the CDO? And the reason I ask that is, the CDO is not going to get lifted because we show them some nice, pretty numbers that, where the numbers look good and tied together. They're going to want to see that we're actually producing the water that we need for our area. CDO won't be lifted because some non-technical organization says that we have water. It's, they're gonna, they're gonna examine it and they'll want to see it. We have proved to the state that we have secure, sufficient and reliable source of water. And I want to make sure that we ask the right questions before we go down this road. Thanks.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Any Board members want anything? Pull from consent calendar.
Are we pulling item four as an announcement?
Uh, yes, that's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the public want anything? Pull from the consent calendar.
Chair Edwards, this is Director Evans.
Yes.
I would like to pull item number two.
Oh, okay. We, item number two. Okay. Any other Board members want anything else? Pull. None? I'm gonna ask the public. Do anyone in the public want anything? Pull.
I see no new raised hands.
Okay.
Could I ask that any persons who spoke under the last item, if you would please deselect your raised hand icon? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's go on back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by the Vice Chair and second by Director Rowley. Roll call vote, please.
Director Evans?
Hi.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
And Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion pass seven zero. Director Evans? Item? Two.
Thank you, Chair.
Page nine.
Yes, page nine. So my question to staff is, so the, there is a deletion of the extension of prior documented onsite water use credits. That is a part of this, um, this, uh, resolution. My question is, are we now also removing the opportunity for someone to request an extension or has that suddenly become free? I understand that the request for an extension of onsite water credits must occur at the time those credits are issued. Is that rule changing with this resolution or not? And if it is not, then why would we remove the cost if we are not removing the item as well?
At this time, there is no mechanism for extending an expired water credit. What was discussed was that when the decision to issue a water credit is made, that decision is an appealable decision to the board. And at that time, that would be an appropriate time if the, um, if there was a concern about the length of time of the credit would be, if staff had done something wrong with that, that would be the time to appeal it to the board.
Okay, but this cost says the extension of a prior documented onsite water credit. So is that not?
Right, and that was a, it was a previous rule. That rule has been deleted. Um, it was deleted some time ago. And in its place, instead of having, where we used to have a five-year, um, period of time that a credit was valid, that could be extended for an additional five years, which is where that extension cost came in. Um, at this time, we just give it a full 10-year period so that we don't have to have somebody deal with trying to remember if they need to get an extension after five years.
Okay. So essentially by deleting this, you are bringing it back up to whatever that, or whatever the state was that you created several years ago when you switched the periods of extension?
Yes, and as I mentioned during AdCom, it was, um, when we made that change, we did not realize that we had this fee and the fees and charges table.
Okay. Now I understand. Thank you.
But at the AdCom meeting, Molly, didn't you suggest that staff look at?
Yes, I was just, thank you. I was, I was coming to that. I just wanted to understand why we were deleting something if we still had a mechanism to do it in place. Now I am understanding we don't have a mechanism to do this in place and therefore this is being changed to, because there is no. Correct. That is what I wanted to ask. Now, yes, as Director Byrne said, at AdCom, I did ask you to come back to the board, bring back the board, uh, a way to expand, to extend water credits. Because I think that, um, in, in, since AdCom, I've been thinking about, what about when people buy a house that has a water credit on it? Or maybe they don't even know there's a water credit on it? And they don't have enough time to act on it and they have no, no mechanism? And maybe that water credit factored in their decision to purchase that particular home in thinking that they could remodel that bathroom or add in the laundry sink or something like that. And by the time they're able to do that, their water credits have expired and then they don't have a mechanism to, to do that. And so I think that it, having a, a set timeframe with no possibility of expansion when we have the turnover in homes that we do have, I think things like that get lost and I think that is a disservice to the public. And so I would like staff to look at adding in some way to extend the credits.
I think AdCom agreed with Molly, um, that that would be appropriate to find a way to, um, address extensions.
Chair Edwards, I'm hanging. Yeah, that was a nod.
How was that, man?
Yeah, I would totally agree with the concept. And my question I actually is, as opposed to doing this piecemeal, why don't we present or provide the language for enabling folks to go for an extension, um, now as opposed to doing it later? Uh, it seems to me that we could, we could deal with it all at one time and, and, and help folks who have dealt with situations like Molly's talking about and, um, Jeanie's talking about. So just, um, why can't we come back and just do it more of a comprehensive look at this whole issue and not do it piecemeal?
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment on that? This matters on the agenda to amend a fee and charge table. This is not to take a look at other amendments to the rules. I believe that the Water Demand Committee has already said that it will, wants to look at that on its agenda. But any action to modify the rules or to provide direction on that is not properly on this agenda for your action.
Thank you, Mr. Laredo.
It is on the Water Demand Committee meeting agenda.
It will be. Coming on there. We're, we're working on it.
It will.
Okay, okay.
Okay, to the agenda item, number two. Any other questions? Director Evans?
No, thank you.
Any other more questions? Thank you. Let's have a motion in a second. I'll make a motion to approve this. Okay. A motion by me, second by, I believe, Director Potter. Roll call vote.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Adams?
You on mute, Director Adams? You have to take it off the mute. There you go.
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Aye.
And Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion pass is seven zero. Thank you. Our next item. This is the announcement regarding current and past board members. My first announcement, um, sad news and good news, but we have a resignation, resignation from Director Molly Allen, uh, Director of Division Three. General Manager, could you read her letter for us, please?
Absolutely, but in the interest of time, I'm just going to excerpt a few of her words and turn them back at her. It has truly been my honor to serve the people of Division Three for the past five years. My intent was to proactively and aggressively seek smart and affordable solutions for a long-term water supply, be an advocate for the ratepayers and improve the district's communications with residents and businesses. We feel that you've done that, Director Evans. Thank you very much. She goes on to say, I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to serve the community alongside you and the other directors, past and present, and our top-notch staff professionals. And I think it goes without saying that she's been a fabulous director, but opportunity that presents itself in, in the job and career world is something you can't take lightly.
Thank you, General Manager. Uh, Director Evans, Evans, you have any comments? And that's all we take. The rest of us will come next month.
Yes, um, I, thank you. It has been my honor to serve. And, um, as Dave said, it, an opportunity has presented itself in my, in my job, in my career to advance and that opportunity doesn't come around all the time. So I'm, I am taking it. But I will be fulfilling this term. So I will be here at, again, at the November board meeting. And so thank you again. Uh, thank you to staff. You've been amazing to work with. All of my questions get answered. They've been very responsive and, um, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with them and, um, and with my fellow directors. This was not an easy decision to make, um, and, uh, but I will continue to, continue to follow. And, um, I, I wish all of you the best and thank you for helping me through and for listening and for being there. And thank you to the people of Division Three for believing in me.
And the rest of us, we're gonna comment next month on her leaving us because she's doing a good job tonight on pushing.
Well, you're not quite out of it yet, Molly.
That's right.
You still have another meeting to go.
Another couple of meetings since she had known.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you on that one. Now, this is really sad news right here for me. Director Robert Brower passed away. And we want to do a revolution, adopt a revolution of recognition for, uh, Director Brower. Uh, General Manager, could you read some comments on that, please?
Yes, just a few. Um, and unfortunately, we got cute with this agenda, so we're gonna have to put it on consent for the special meeting, uh, just to adopt it because we struck the language for adoption. But nevertheless, tonight, it's appropriate to, uh, read portions of this into the record. This will be Resolution Number 2020-16, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, expressing appreciation to Robert S. Brower for 11 years of exceptional service on the Board of Directors. And I'll just hit a few of the recitals. Whereas in 2007, Robert Brower was elected to represent voter Division Five of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District and was re-elected in 2011 and 2015. Mr. Brower served as Chair of the Board in 2011 and 2017 and held the position of Vice Chair in 2010 and 2016. Whereas, Mr. Brower was an active participant on board committees, including the Water Supply Planning Committee, which he helped create in 2009 and served as Chair for eight years, the Legislative Advocacy Committee and the Water Demand Committee. Whereas, Mr. Brower advanced cooperation among public agencies, local jurisdictions and agricultural interests in advancing the district's partnership on Pure Water Monterey to meet community water needs identified in the State Water Board's Order 2009-006. He was a proponent of the district's aquifer and storage recovery projects and supported funding development of water supply project alternatives such as the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project Desalination Plant. He also facilitated dialogue with federal and state representatives on assisting with funding of water supply projects and environmental programs. Finally, whereas, while he was known for his service, enthusiasm, kindness and guidance, Mr. Brower succumbed to a prolonged battle with cancer much too soon in his retirement on September 30th, 2020. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Directors recognizes him for his 11 years of exceptional service to the district and the community.
Thank you, Jam. Any Board members want to comment on that? Take comments on it. Take comments on that?
I would. I just think he's, uh, was a mainstay. He certainly um, pushed the Water Supply Committee to really focus on water projects. Um, he was not only had a lot of expertise and a lot of, uh, um, political savvy. He was just a fun, great person and we're going to miss him.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other directors like to comment on Director Bauer?
Mr. Chair, this is Dave. I would for just a moment. You know, Bob was an, Bob was an excellent water policy person, but more than that, to me, he was a very, very good friend. We, uh, we really enjoyed a lot of times together. He was a big auto aficionado. We'd spend time during the concours. I'm going to miss him dearly. You know, when he got ill, I knew that the, the outcome was not going to be good, but he was a fighter. He hung in there as long as he could, but it was real shocking to me to find out that he finally passed, so I'm going to miss him dearly.
Any other director? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Thank you. Um, Bob and I did not always agree. In fact, we mostly disagreed. But, um, we had the opportunity to go together with a group of us, uh, to Washington for a meeting and spent a good deal of time together there where we just really formed a lovely bond. He was that kind of person. I think Jeanie described it really well. He was a true, truly a lovely man and, um, I will forever remember the kindness that he showed me on that trip and, um, will, uh, keep a very fond place in my heart for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Adams. Uh, any other comments? Any other directors? Uh, Director Riley?
Um, I was, uh, I didn't serve with, uh, Bob, but I was, I think, I called myself, I consider myself a junior member of the Water Supply Committee regardless. I attended very many of those meetings. You know, what Bob did is made whatever the issue was, he made it a conversation. He wasn't preaching, he wasn't selling, he wasn't, um, kind of controlling the dialogue. He made it a conversation. And I just res- so much that style and that ability to do that. And, uh, it just shows a real genuine kind of skill set that he has, but also it comes from the heart, I think. He really wanted to share and, uh, ha- have the engagement and, uh, I, I just totally respected that, but I'll miss him too.
Thank you. Any other members? Any other board members? Well, here's comments from me. I knew Bob Brower back in 2005 when he got on the board. And one of his first main things that he said was, it was in the wintertime. He said, I like to go to Washington DC to Aqua. Boy, that turned the board upside down because we haven't never had anybody go that far for a meeting or a conference. But we finally let him go and he got us going to Washington. Because they, all the way up to now, people go to Washington to the Aqua and we had done a lot of good work there. When he got us started on it. Another good thing, I was glad to see Bob Brower. I think it was last year when we, uh, got Monterey One Water, uh, Pure Water going. He showed up for that. He flew in for that and he was looking well. And I was glad to see because he was one of the ones with the Vice Chair and others that, that pushed that project on. And I'm glad he was there and it's nice to sit up there and say, okay. He was pretty happy with that. But I'm going to miss him. He did great work. Okay. Any other comments? All right. Next item on the agenda will be General Manager's report.
Yes, and we'll rely on Arlene to, uh, bring this up on the screen.
Almost there.
And I'll just try to hit some highlights again in the interest of time. Great. So the important thing about this report is it does reflect a full, uh, water year. And so there may be some minor changes, uh, as you go back through the year's data and move some water from, you know, Table 13 to some other location and so forth. But generally speaking, um, this is the, the annual results. And what you can see is actual, uh, was significantly below budgeted for the year. And this again is, uh, production, but also includes, uh, some ASR productions, so it's not just for customers. We'll look at that in a minute. Next slide, please. The other thing that is new about this report, you can see that the third column now includes Pure Water Monterey. We began deliveries for customer service September 1st, so for the month of September, where a number of the wells were shut down and being re- being conditioned. Um, 88 acre feet was the actual. Um, and suffice to say, you know, Sand City D-Sell, uh, did some production for the year. Um, as you know, it's kind of moved around and, uh, there's not been a a good number that we can focus in on for an average for the last several years. And then Table 13 Water Rights came in higher than target, so um, all of these other little pockets of water are starting to show some history and some value. Next slide. So this is water production for customer service or customer demand. The important thing to note here is, um, it looks like we came in 142 acre feet below, uh, last year. I wouldn't say that's necessarily a continuation of the trend, but we have seen it decline over the last five to six years. Um, but when we get the annual report with the monthly totals, we're going to go in and see if we can't find, uh, some of the evidence of what COVID-19 did to, uh, water consumption. So I think it's an off year because of the COVID shelter in place. Um, nevertheless, um, demand is, is down for the sixth year in a row. Uh, next slide. Uh, Michael Bear, Michael Bear, no rain. Next slide. And there is still some, uh, unimpaired stream flow. Uh, I know that certain reaches of the river have dried up that did result in fish rescues. We've got a fairly full facility at Sleepy Hollow right now. But, um, the river has continued to flow, uh, to the, in the most. And that concludes the, uh, uh, compliance report.
Any questions on the to General Manager on compliance? I got one. Uh, Jam, could you tell us? Our our water bills are being hit with Pure Water Monterey payments coming up. And I was told that that water won't reach my faucet until X amount of time.
Yeah, it's a great, great question. So so the purchased water surcharge did hit the bills and that's because Calam is now purchasing the water as it's injected. The actual molecules aren't going to find its way into an extraction well or a production well for more than six months. So you won't actually have the molecules from Pure Water Monterey in your tap, uh, for a significant amount of time. We have what's called a tracer test, which is tracking the water to ensure that it's not less than six months, so that we meet regulatory compliance for an environmental buffer or barrier. Um, but yeah, it's a very good point. You won't, you know, if you went to your tap in September and said, oh, oh, this tastes awful. Uh, it wasn't Pure Water Monterey water. It was, uh, just the, the standard, uh, water from all production sources.
Thank you. Any other questions for board members before we move on? Okay. Uh, report from District General Counsel on the October 8, 2020 close session. Mr. Laredo?
Uh, excuse me, uh, Chair Edwards, there is an item seven uh, that just has some, uh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Updated us on the, before, um,
Yes, so als- also with the close of the water year, uh, we had to pause and reflect on whether the, the milestones defined under the cease and desist order have been complied with or not. In June of this year, the, the joint applicants for the revised CDO filed a filing with the State Water Board indicating whether or not it felt collectively that the milestone would be met. That report signaled clearly that we did not expect the milestone to be met. These are milestones three through seven. There are two others, um, that we've already attained. We've attained the third milestone, the fourth milestone, but if you look at the third one down here, which is actually the fifth milestone. Drilling activity, foundation framing, um, all of these things because of the, the delay in the permitting process as of September 30th of this year has been failed to been met. Uh, next slide, Arlene. So what happens when you miss a milestone is a reduction in the effective diversion limit of 1,000 acre feet. So heading into this new water year, our, the community's effective diversion limit, Calam, the company's ability to, uh, take water from the river has been reduced from 83, well, 8,310 acre feet per year to 7,310 acre feet per year going forward. Now, with the supplemental of that June report, with our July letter that the board authorized, with Planning and Conservation League's letter, um, and California American staff's meeting with the State Water Board, uh, a few weeks ago, all of those combined, um, effectively, uh, has State Water Board staff uh, examining two questions. Um, was the r- reason for missing a milestone the fault or the cause of any of the applicants? And again, the applicants in the CDO were Cal- California American, the company, uh, the Mayor's Authority, which is no longer being effectively, uh, in, in business, the Water Management District, the City of Pacific Grove, or the Pebble Beach Company. Um, the second question that they would examine is if the missed milestone was not the result of the cause of the applicants, the board has the authority to, uh, suspend the reduction of 1,000 acre feet and maintain the original effective diversion limit. So State Board staff has to first decide whether these two questions merit examination and discussion at the board level. And then, uh, if they don't, then the effective diversion limit is dropped with no further, uh, consideration. If they do and push it to the board, then we would wait to see if the board agrees that it's not the fault of any of the app- the applicants, but further agrees to suspend the, uh, penalty. So for that, we'll just have to stay tuned, but the effective, uh, course of action going forward is that limit has been reduced for the, this coming water year to 7310. Our letter had an additional request, which was to extend the CDO. Um, and actually during the point in time that the CDO is still in effect, um, to meet these, uh, effective diversion limit, uh, targets, we have the ability to carry forward some previous year's savings. So if performance exceeded the 8310, we built up a bank of, uh, available carryover credit that could be used up to 750 acre feet per year while trying to meet the target effective diversion limits. When they, when we hit December 31st, 2021, the CDO no longer has language in there for continued carryover credit. Um, there is some question, I think the question was even, uh, mentioned earlier about whether we can meet the, the CDO, the legal limits under the CDO. But, um, I guess where I'm going is if we want to extend the CDO and that could be us or any other party, a new application is likely to be required. So that will not be addressed under the, the two questions I mentioned earlier. Um, next slide. So this, you've seen before, I think I walked you through it at the last meeting. What I wanted to indicate here is if in fact, the company could get down to their legal limit, which is 3,376 acre feet, and, and Pure Water Monterey, a year from now is producing their full 3,500 acre feet per year, then it's very likely that will, that Calam will not violate the CDO limits because of where current pumping is relative to customer demand. But it's also very likely that the CDO could not be lifted. And that goes to somebody's earlier point that we need a permanent supply that will demonstrate sufficiency for years to come. And that, uh, you know, I guess the point here is we could be in a position where if no progress is being made on the permanent supply for a year or two, we're also not violating the cease and desist order. So to some folks, that gives them comfort that there's breathing room. To other folks, it doesn't change the desperation at all because the other pockets of water are either banked ASR savings or things like that Table 13 Water Right that may not be here in a dry year or, um, uh, Sand City D-Sell, which the average came in more than sufficient to cover the, the shortfall here, but it hasn't had a reliable enough, uh, history. So the point of this slide is with only the legally available water being withdrawn, it does appear that we can survive as a community barring unknown issues surrounding the actual plumbing or hydraulics of the, the Calam system. So, you know, it just puts us in a very interesting place that we would not have predicted we would be in, uh, even seven, eight years ago. And it's mostly because we've had permanent customer reduction in use due to a combination of the price of water and, uh, conservation, permanent conservation, uh, savings. So with that, that concludes my, uh, report on item seven.
Any more questions on item seven?
Chair, this is Director Evans. I do have a question.
Go ahead, Director Evans.
On the last chart that you showed, you showed that the, um, and I don't have the number, I didn't write it down, the average demand was 9,800 acre feet-ish. Uh, but in your compliance report, it looked like it was somewhere around 9,400, 9,500, 9,600. So theoretically, if the use next year is the same as the use this year, then that 81 acre feet has already been absorbed in. Is that correct? Okay, so, yeah, so there's, I mean, there's, nobody's got a crystal ball, but, um, it looks like, yes, there is, there is the possibility that we wouldn't, we would have more supply than we would need.
Right.
Without, and still create the legal diversion.
Right. And the, the thing to keep in mind though is this community wants the moratorium lifted and the ability to grow and that's going to be a slightly different storyline.
Sure, sure, absolutely. No, I'm just looking at it as, as meeting the needs and still getting off the river. Um, but yes, there are additional supplies that would offer a buffer above that. So that was all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Riley, go ahead.
Um, Dave, um, you made a comment that there's no carryover credit allowed after the CDO ending date, which is December 21. Um, as long as there are carryover credits, um, would it, would it make, let, let me, let me ask the question a little differently. Um, would it make any sense, uh, to maximize the pumping from the Carmel River in order to then maximize the res- the, the storage of, uh, of all the other excess water into the Seaside Basin? In order to increase the reservoir, uh, our, our, our reserves for whatever may come? Is, is there an angle on pursuing that? I'm curious. I don't need an answer right now, but if there's a, if there's a way that your supply committee or your meeting with Calam and with Johnson and others, is there, can that, can that subject be explored a little bit so that at least there's this question about how to maximize our reserves? I understand that whatever, whatever revenue there is around the Pure Water Monterey project may have to be postponed or delayed in order to, to, to hold the storage. Anyway, it's a question that I, and I, I think I'm asking it the right way, but I'm not sure and I really don't need an answer, but I'm just hoping that the next time you give a report, you can kind of go, clarify some of that stuff for me too.
Sure. And I think maybe Water Supply Planning, we can bring that topic.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards? If I may, Chair Edwards?
Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
Yeah, Dave, um, just on the issue of, um, just bringing up the fact that Yeah, Dave, just on the issue of just bringing up the fact that the Seaside Basin is overdrafted, and so there's a deficit just overall there, how does that play into this concept of having carryover, for example?
Yeah. So, and I don't want to confuse people, but there's two terms, two uses of the term carryover. One is in the cease and desist order, which is if the Carmel diversions by Cal AM were less than the effective diversion limit, then that difference can go into the bank. And then you can pull up to 750 out of your bank to meet certain conditions if you missed a bunch of milestones, let's say, all along the way. And that's carryover under the CDO. Under the Seaside Basin, there's also carryover when production is less than the adjudicated limit. And so at the end of the water year, the water master counts up the unpumped available water and allocates that to the standard producers. And so that carryover credit has a lot of variability in it. The issue of the Seaside Basin being overdrafted, at some point, physical water has to be replaced in the Seaside Basin. And so, for example, when the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project D cell component was sized, or when Pure Water Monterey expansion was sized, it was actually, they, they were actually sized, counting a 700 acre foot per year in lieu recharge by California American for 25 years. And so in that case, your standard producer carryover might still occur because of pumping under your limit. However, the limit's also going to drop down once more in 2021. So continuing to outperform on the Seaside Basin will become harder. But yeah, the, the need to replenish the basin is what, is what happens next. And so any new water supply has to have that factored in to, you know, the back of the head, which is for 25 years, let's put 700 acre feet back in the ground by not taking it out of the ground.
And so if I may, just to follow up, so basically, under the current scenario, nothing is going towards addressing the overdraft condition. It's the status quo.
Exactly. Which is why your new water supply, permanent water supply is needed.
Thanks, Dave.
Any other board questions? All right. GM, I'd like for you to set up a pack meeting with the, with the mayors so we can bring them up to date on what's going on with the state. I think with their authority leaving in a way, we need to step in and make sure we stay responsible to tell them what's going on. And one thing I don't believe in, if it's not my fault, I'm not going to give you 1,000 acre feet. And that's something that the board is going to have to discuss later, probably, when we get, get notice on what's going on. But it wasn't our fault that Cal AM pulled their D cell application. It wasn't our fault that a judge said, no, you can't do anything until we find out from the Coastal Commission. And I'm, I'm one in this community that's not going to give 1,000 acre feet because I've got 1,000 acre feet to give. We don't have 1,000 acre feet to give. We don't have it. So 10 for fight from the board chair on that until 2021.
Well, we do have an attorney from the State Water Board on our call as an attendee, so I think you just convinced them.
Well, thank you. And we want to, we want to continue on, but set that meeting up with those mayors so we can take, let them know where we're going. Thank you. Any other board questions? Okay, close that matter. General Counsel? General Counsel, shut you off.
There we go. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and to the public. This is a report of the closed session that occurred on October 8. There were two items before the board. The first was the public employee performance evaluation for your general manager, Mr. Stolt. The board did need to first discuss and present the findings of its regular evaluation to Mr. Stolt. The second item was a meeting with you, Mr. Chairman, as negotiator for any modifications to the salary and compensation package for Mr. Stolt as general manager. And the product of that is on your open session agenda, item number 13, which proposes an amendment to the employment agreement for Mr. Stolt. There was no other action that was taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any more comments on the General Counsel report? If not, we'll move to the next item. Directive reports including AB 1, 2, 3, 4, report on trips, conferences, and attendance in meetings. Do we have any board reports? Okay, I have a thank you to our CFO for the job well done with the Government Financial Association. We got a certificate of achievement for ethics league and finance reporting. I want to thank the rest and his team over there to make sure that all our reports were done. And, and we got another certificate. I'll spend one more, or a couple of more, but well done. Thank you, General Manager, for keeping that staff going. Any other reports? Okay, now we're in the public hearing. How many people we have out there, General Manager?
It was 24. Let's take a look. It's 30, 35 or 33, but many of them are here on issues that we've already moved, and some are here just in support of those issues, so.
Okay, so public hearings, item number nine and 10 are continued to another date. Will be out shortly. So stay tuned if you were here for item nine and 10. Okay, General Manager, action items.
Yes. So this is providing direction regarding Pure Water Monterey Expansion Final SEIR. The content or the, the idea behind it is best explained by General Counsel Laredo, but I did want to point out the timeline in the staff note. It's a little bit like a decision tree that if you decided you wanted to head down this path today, you would send notice tomorrow. However, election day will pass and Monterey One Water may decide that it wants to change its position relative to certification of the SEIR and have the district stand, stand down, if you will, or they may choose not to. Hopefully, as requested in this letter, they would consider disputing or not disputing the district's exertion of its powers by the end of November meeting. And if they don't adopt a dispute resolution, then we could certify and wait for likely legal action from others. Or if they do adopt a resolution, then we would, I think OPR actually says they have 21 days to act on resolution of who the lead agency should be. And with that, Dave Laredo, I don't know if you've got, if you want to talk a little bit about the concept here?
Well, having your board packet, the draft letter, that is, I believe, our recommendation that the board does consider to send this, the concept is that we have had a partnership with Monterey One Water. But Monterey One Water, for various circumstances, has, has stalled in its action to proceed with this. And so our choice is either to acquiesce to that and recognize that the environmental review is going to stall, or to ask them to proceed further within our collaboration. And if they do not, then to assert lead agency status and, and take the EIR for review consideration, and if it's appropriate to, to certify that just to keep this matter moving. So that's, that's the concept behind the letter. I certainly understand that circumstances may have changed before Monterey One Water. One of the thoughts is that this letter may provide a call to action for Monterey One Water to do, to do that, which we had previously agreed that we would be doing, and that is to collaboratively process the EIR forward so that we can actually consider the project. But one way or the other, at the moment, we are stuck. We're not moving forward. And this is one path to, by which we can move forward. I know that we've heard from communications from California American Water Company that suggests that this is not an appropriate way to proceed. We have reached out to special counsel, Schumahal and Weinberger, as to avenues that we can pursue. And this is a, a concept that has bubbled up as perhaps the, the most effective means to act at this time. So I feel that this is an appropriate concept for you to consider and to approve if you so choose. That's all on my comments.
Thank you, General Manager and General Counsel. More questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, vice chair.
Is there any indication that the State Water Resources Board would accept the expansion project and get us out of the CDO? Is there any indication of that?
We, we've had conversations about what it will take. And so the way the CDO and then ultimately the moratorium gets lifted is, and unfortunately, it's not a symmetric document. For the not my fault part, it's any of the applicants. For the filing of evidence of sufficient replacement supply, it's only California American Water. So they have to, you know, submit a request to lift the CDO based on evidence, and then the State Water Board staff and needs to make a recommendation based on that evidence. The state boards indicated that there'd probably be a workshop or some sort of session in between so others can weigh in on the evidence. We, we, the district and district staff feel strongly that Pure Water Monterey clearly meets the permanent replacement supply criteria for many years. We also agree that Cal AM has disputed that. That's, you know, kind of the basis of the Coastal Commission issue. But state board staff has on multiple occasions said, we're interested in seeing you get off the river and meet your legal supply requirement. If another project can do it and can get the approvals, then they, they would be satisfied. But it's, you know, it is definitely in that area of, okay, just because we said it so, will others agree that it's so? And, you know, you have to present the body of evidence.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
Yes, Chair.
Director Hoffman.
Mr. Laredo, you just mentioned the advice from Schulte and Weinberger. And as I recall, the advice was that the district likely does not qualify for this dispute resolution process. And further says there's no law, there's no precedent for taking over the sequel situation. So I'm not understanding why you're mischaracterizing the information from Schulte and Weinberger.
Well, with all due respect, I don't believe I did mischaracterize. I, we, we've been very clear that this is not an ordinary circumstance. There is a process by the, through the state, through the sequel process when there is a lead agency dispute. I'm not sure that we do have a lead agency dispute at this point. One of the concepts of this letter is to have this be a call to action for Monterey One Water. If Monterey One Water does not decide that there are changed circumstances sufficient to have it proceed, then that would have the, the path where this district could proceed. If Monterey One Water wanted to challenge that, then OPR does have the dispute resolution process. That's, but this is an area for which there is very, very little practical circumstance. There are only a handful of incidents where there are changes in lead agency status or disputes between lead agencies. So I can't point to a case that tells you that we have the ability to do this. But there, we, we do believe that this is an appropriate path in this really extraordinary circumstance where we are collaborating with a, a partner agency and have the partner agency just stop in midstream and, and not take it for further action and consideration. If, if we are to be a partner and our pay, to pay our, our agreed upon share for this process, but we're not getting anything out of that. So I, I don't believe that I mischaracterized Schumahal and Weinberger's role in this. If I have, then I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I guess I shouldn't have, have perhaps referenced them at all. It is my belief that this is the appropriate way to proceed.
Well, that's the interesting thing is that you referenced their analysis, and yet stating is a total disregard from what their recommendation is. So when you use the term "we," who is the "we" that you're referring to?
Me, my office, in collaboration with your general manager.
Any other board members have any questions? Mr. Laredo?
Yes, sir.
Will this cost us anything to do this right now?
50 cents to mail the letter. The letter has been drafted. The effort will come thereafter. If in fact you proceed, if there, in fact, there's a challenge, then of course, there would be the, the, the cost if in fact you choose to defend. But I'm not certain that there would be a challenge.
All right, sir. Thank you for the, for the cost. And thank you for not putting that 50 cent on that cost estimate here. I appreciate that. I think we can scram, scrump, get that 50 cent, 50 pennies, round that off in somewhere to mail this next door. Any other board questions?
Yep.
All right. Oh, Director Adams?
Thank you. Is there any cost of goodwill for this?
I think that's what the meeting was about, that we had Director Evans, myself, and the Monterey One directors. And I thought that went okay. I mean, it seemed like they understood and heard that. So I think we have kind of broached the subject. I don't know, Dave, what was your feeling?
Yeah, that, that's my impression that you've, you kind of trial ballooned it and didn't receive major pushback, probably because of all of the other discussion, which was about how we cooperate and how we pay for things. And they got a fat check for the pre-construction costs on the expansion sent out Friday. So that, that healed a lot of wounds as well.
Can you remind me, Jean, was the meeting after the Coastal Commission's decision, the Coastal Commission's meeting?
Yes.
That was just, what, two, three weeks ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was September 3rd, I think, around that.
Right.
Around there.
So that would have preceded the Coastal Commission.
Okay, any other questions before we take this out to the public? Okay, no other questions? Alan, could you take it out to the public for two minutes each? Two minutes on this one. We got a three minute clock. Oh, thank you.
I'm, I'm in the process. Just a moment. Give me a minute. Okay.
Thank you. I'll put my back.
We're on two minutes now, and I'll get my participants list up again, and we can hear from the public.
Point of order, the agenda says three minutes are allowed for folks. And I don't know that, you know, that a decision by the chair can change it with folks on the agenda?
Well, Director Hoffman, I want to ask my General Counsel, can I do that? Well, Director Hoffman, I want to ask my General Counsel, can I do that? Mr. Laredo, can I change the time?
Mr. Chair, it's been my recollection that the chair has, from time to time, modified the three minutes based upon the matters on the agenda and the number of people that plan on speaking. The courts are very clear that the body does have the right to manage the time allowed, and that there is no rule of law that requires three minutes.
Thank you. Two minutes, Arlene, please.
Paul Bruno, please present your comment.
Good evening, members of the board. Paul Bruno, resident of Monterey. My comments are quite short. This is not a very good look. From the outside looking in, and you see an agency coming in, and kind of, I would hate to use the word bullying, but I think bullying is the proper term here. And the question is, how far do you take this? Do you keep pushing? Let's just take it all the way to the end. Do you try to force them to build a project they don't want to build? So you're opening a door, you're about ready to step through it, you might want to think about how far you're willing to walk, because that's what I see. I see a tactic that is not the best, especially when you look at what this board is already up to. It's in the process of analyzing the takeover of the water company. How many takeovers do you want to pursue at one time? So I wish you the best on this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Bear, please present your comment.
Yeah, just to step back for one second, I want to say, you know, who's at fault when you're talking about the CDO, and CalM did pull their application, you can blame them. As far as this issue goes, I think you need, you know, Dave did mention it briefly, here's an election coming, and it can impact Monterey One Board. The election's two weeks from tomorrow. So I think it would be, you know, I support the idea of sending the letter now, letting the current board receive the letter and wrestle with it. But recognize, I think it's important to recognize, there's a big effort. There's a lot of people who want public water who are not happy either with the way Monterey One Water has been behaving related to the EIR. And we're going to have a lot more information about what their board looks like in two weeks. So I just want to put that in everyone's mind. And it's up to you, but I suggest you get them that letter before the election and let them realize where you stand. Because as I said, I said it way back when they were deciding not to certify several months ago, they're giving their partner the middle finger, as well as the rest of the community, by making that move. So I fully support you guys standing up for what you agreed to with these guys, and get them moving. Thank you.
Rick Hoyer, please present your comment.
Thank you. Rick Hoyer, resident of Monterey. I think to echo Paul Bruno a bit, is I think the form of doing this, to me, it's like, we didn't get what we wanted, so now we're going to take the ball and run with it ourselves. I participate in the hearings at Monterey One Water. They didn't certify because they had major issues with it. And despite what some people here say there aren't, there are issues in Salinas about it, there are issues in other areas, and that is a regional board. You are not a regional board. You'd be certifying an EIR that has an impact on areas outside of your jurisdiction as well. They're the ones who have all the equipment. They're the ones who are actually doing the first phase. Not you all. You're providing money, that's it. If the election comes and it changes, they may vote to do something different. But to start down this path of being an aggressive move against a sister agency that you have worked with in the past, I think is a major mistake. You're opening yourselves up to all kinds of issues moving forward with this, particularly if it challenges you or if other folks step in from a legal standpoint on it. It's a door you do not need to open. If indeed, things change in the election, and if they don't, then that's the way it is. It is not certified, because there were issues, and they had issues. As lead agency, they had issues with it. And you would need to be looking at all those and not just papering it over. And unfortunately, I'm hearing things from people on this board who feel they've already decided that it needs to be certified, and they haven't had any hearings on it. They may have listened in, but you haven't had all the public testimony that Monterey One Water had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Skipley, please present your comment.
Hi, thank you. I attended a lot of those hearings regarding the certification for the SEIR, and these were fairly hardball politics at times, in my view. And I don't think there were any real good environmental reasons not to certify it, according to all the legal issues involved. And from what I understand, those issues that some of the representatives had been resolved in the final EIR. So I just felt like there was just a lot of push that was more political. So I'd like to see them revisit it. I really would like to see the board revisit it over there and take a look at that and certify this SEIR. So yeah, send the letter, get a discussion going. You've put a lot of money into this project. It was a cooperative project, and I'm hoping that that can continue to come to fruition, because we need it. And, you know, we don't know that that D-SAL plant will be here. We need to develop its water. It's not just a backup, it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marley Mountain, did you want to present a comment?
Yes. Once again, I'm agreeing with Susan. I think that we all deserve a good rehearing of the issues over there at M1 Water that stick to the issues, and are not just political posturing and actually misinformation or misunderstanding of what belongs in the EIR and what the facts are. So yes, I would recommend that you go ahead and send the letter, and or if you feel that you can make more headway by urging them one more time to approve, and then send the letter. Do what you think is best. Please, let's move this project forward. We don't know if the D-SAL will ever be built, and it's not a good idea to keep pushing this up and pushing this up, because then the backup plan, what turns out to be the most sensible and affordable source of water, won't be ready. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Caller, did you want to present a comment?
Yes. Good evening again. Tom Rowley calling. Having participated also in the Monterey One Water, and also reading the staff reports, the supplementary EIR was defective, and one issue was the feasibility of the project and the source water. But even a major item that was not included or analyzed in the EIR, or in the supplement to it, was the fine discharge into Monterey Bay Sanctuary. And this failure that the supplementary EIR, I was also present when the original EIR was adopted by MRW PCA in 2012. There was no EIS done in accordance with NEPA. This is a failure, and a comment was made on the supplementary EIR for the additional project, the expanded project. This is a major failure, but I would like to suggest that you did not, the board here tonight, did not hear the list of findings or the reasons why the Monterey One Water did not approve the supplementary EIR. It was not a superficial decision, it was a very thoughtful decision. Granted, it was a close vote, but there were substantial issues raised, why the EIR was not adequate. And I think the report you've received from the staff, in your staff report for tonight's meeting, was very inadequate and not up to par with the usual thoroughness that you expect from the General Manager and the Counsel. So that's a quick comment for you. The EIR supplementary was just not adequate and did not meet the requirements of the federal law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anna Thompson, please present your comment.
Yes, I'd like to say that, please, to go ahead and proceed to get this certified. So to get the, all the information was provided, that there were no real reasons not to certify it. So I don't know why we have to be subjected to always having whoever is in power to be through a political move to go ahead and stop this, because CalM wants their D-SAL plant. And that is not right, because we, in good terms, we went to have this approved, and we all want to work toward getting the water that we need. And there's no reason not to recycle as much water as possible. And there's no real reasons that it is not environmentally safe. So I think that we should proceed, and we should go ahead and be able to have it certified. That's all. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Eric Tynan, please present your comment.
Hello, this is Eric Tynan again. I think if you go forward with this, you have to look at, you're going to have to talk to Monterey County Water Resource Agency, who's stated that they only permit their issue was only for Pure Water Monterey, not for any expansion. The city of Salinas, which said its water was already, they had programs for it. There's also, Casterville just lost the Regal Brothers a few years ago, and that took out about 10% of our production, which is, if you're looking at this as the pond water, a couple of packing sheds move out, that water's not available. If you have a drought, that water's not available. But mostly, are you prepared to go toe-to-toe with the county water resources, with the city of Salinas? There's a reason that the Monterey One Board decided that way it did. It was a split vote. As public officials, you're very well aware, and the amount you vote have, you know, cast aspersions at your motives. But I appreciate the thoughtful creation you're making, and I would say just be aware what might be down, you know, as well as the consequences that may come out of this. So you can work with Monterey One Water and come to a rational decision based on mutual respect. I think that's the best way to go. Thanks a lot, and keep up the good work. Take care.
Thank you, sir.
Melody Chrislaw, please present your comment.
So that environmental impact report had no flaws. There were no environmental issues with the Pure Water Monterey expansion whatsoever. Their Sequa attorney repeatedly reminded the board that the issues they were raising were not environmental issues, and many of them were refuted by the staff as not even being real issues, as in taking Salinas Valley water. They are not using Salinas Valley water. The board was an embarrassment. There were no deficiencies. The whole reason was simply that Casterville wanted a peninsula to pay for the 700-liter feet of D-SAL water they would get. Everyone knows that. This is just a charade. I mean, that environmental impact report is perfectly good, it should be certified. And they have very bad faith with the community for not doing that, and I think you should go forward with the letter. So I do hope that their board composition changes after November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Tilly, please present your comment.
Thank you, Arlene. Thank you, board members. I'd like to point out that supply and usage are two very different things. Demand, when you're looking at the idea that usage is not, that demand's not in place, you're making a mistake. What you're looking at is usage. If you have a plant and you stop watering and it dies, you can say it's demand went away. Its usage went away too. And what's the theory here is for this community to receive the amount of water it needs. A better indication of demand is housing costs. And for all of us out there who are trying to buy homes and trying to live in this community, the idea that there's not a demand out there is false. Just the very fact that the price of a home keeps going up and up shows that there is a very strong demand around here for people to live here, and it's an unmet need. The housing need is not being met by this district, and it'd be nice if it could be. Understandably, it's had a financial impact to the community, and your charge is to build sustainable water supply that delivers the cheapest water in a sustainable manner. It's difficult to hear the reliance on roach projections around the water supply. The plot table that was presented earlier is this full production of all supply elements. Once again, we are praying for rain, and without it, we have rationing, the house and cars that spoke of earlier. We already have millions of lawsuits occurring up the coast at a different water district. I'd like this board to consider focusing more on water supply and less on lawsuits. Thank you very much.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands. And anyone who, please press star three to end your call, or please disable your raised hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene. Back to the board. Questions, comments, motion? Director Riley, I see your hand up.
I have some comments to make, but I'd like to move approval of sending him the letter to Monterey One Water Board. But I have some comments if he gets a second.
You got a second from the chair?
May I make my comment?
You can start making your comments. No comments now.
As much as people want to characterize this one way or the other, and it kind of is consistent with what other prior messages we've seen, I take a little different take on this. We've been the banker of this project more than they have. So it's like a banker asking somebody who's taken a loan, "How's it going?" And if it's not going very well, it seems to me it's in perfect harmony with the relationship between a banker and a builder, say, to begin to ask questions about how can we get beyond this kind of little differences that we have. So I think it's perfectly logical. I think the effort made to engage the Monterey One Board was a pretty amicable environment, and I think the conclusion was not, you know, clear, but there was no hostility about how we go forward and so on. I think this letter is very well written. I think it's well crafted. I think it's very gentle. But I also think it's needed, and I'm going to obviously support.
Go ahead, Director Adams.
Thank you. So I'm of two minds with this, and I'm hoping that the discussion with the board will help me come to closure. I guess I'm just thinking that I think November 3rd is going to be a really critical day for all of us. I think we're going to see a lot of changes everywhere. And I'm just wondering, when I think about November 3rd and what will happen at the local level, is there any reason that we would be better holding our letter until after the election to have a better handle on how this kind of letter would be received? I very much appreciate Jean's comments about the meeting that she and Molly had with the members of the representatives from the Monterey One Water Board. I'm just kind of back and forth on this, and I'm not sure which way to go, whether it would make any sense. And I also don't know, maybe someone on the board could tell me, if the composition, if it appears as if the composition of the board of Monterey One Water will change after the election, after we see what happens with the election, how long would it be before that a new board would be formed and ready to take action? Is it, you know, the next board meeting? Would it be after January?
It'd be January. It'd be January. That's when the new councils- That's when the new councils pick their representation.
Okay, well, you've answered my question for me then. I'm in good shape now. Thank you very much for that. Okay, thank you.
So Chair.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Well, the part of the consideration is we have a lot of money on both sides, both agencies sunk into this project. But I also think that we have to retain the the partnership. And I think this is maybe premature. I think that waiting for the new board to get seated and see where that goes would be more prudent.
Okay, any other? Director Adams.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Jeanie. That was that was part of my thought. I did I did hear some things in public comment that caused me to pause. I I know this board knows that we're not making the if this goes forward and we do become the lead agency, that we're not making the decision to make the project, to to go forward with the project. Obviously, that that would have to lie with Monterey One Waters Board, at least at this time, since it's their land and their assets and all of that. I think the discussion is purely for certification. I've heard a lot of people say that 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 their board felt that this was just not adequate and that there were issues with it. Well, we have asked the Monterey One Water Board to provide what those issues were and why it was not that they why they deemed it not adequate and have not received any response to that. I am concerned that the lack of certification was not due to environmental concerns, because I'm sure that if there was an environmental concern, that one was not sufficiently studied, that the Monterey One Water Board would direct the consultants that they hired to go back and and do more research or do whatever it takes to address those environmental concerns that had not been addressed. And I I did not see that happen. If there were issues with the consultant's work, then that consultant should go back. We funded this. We funded a good chunk of it, and we're on on the hook potentially to fund the entire thing. And I have nothing to go back to the residents of Monterey and show them what they got for that million dollars that we had set aside for this effort. And I am I am frankly appalled that that another agency can spend taxpayer money and not get to some to some form of conclusion. I mean, their lack of action on this causes me to think that the consultant that did the work is not professional, and that I know is not true. And so I am I am frustrated by not getting the information and not figuring a path forward to actually bring this to some conclusion. So but I don't think that this letter is the right way to go. I don't want to ruin our relationship with Monterey One Water. As gentle as the wording may have been, as Director Riley pointed out, I I don't know that this is the right thing to do, or maybe it's just not the right time to do this. I think the Monterey One Water Board needs to rethink their lack of certification and then provide some justification, as Director Riley stated, to their banker to explain where their progress has been held up and what they intend to do about it. And we have asked that for months and have gotten no response. So I I don't want to support sending this letter at this time. And it's because I I would like Monterey One Water to resolve this. I would like them to get their money spent, get our money spent appropriately, and either fix the deficiencies in the document or come up with some explanation as to why and the specifics of why this is not correct or what it would take to correct that.
Director Potter, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do. I'm I'm suffering from the same issues that some of my colleagues have just articulated. This was a political decision. This was not based on the adequacy of the EIR, frankly. It was a political decision. I'd rather see the politics play out to see what happens before we send the letter. On the other hand, I I don't want I don't want to incur any additional financial expenses on this either if we're gonna go to instantaneously go to court. I would like to see how the politics play out. But I I do think that we are getting kind of disrespect in the process as partners. But I think we're all kind of suffering from the same thing, at least. Molly, what you just articulated is where I stand. I would point out, though, that there's also a typo in this fourth paragraph where it says, and this is kind of run on sentence, it says, "The duties in other circumstances such as that now extend." I don't even know what extend means. E X T E N T. I don't even know if that's a word. Where Monterey One Water was lead agency, you might want to fix that if we're gonna send a well crafted letter. But but I I do I do I do suffer from the same issues that you just articulated, Molly. I'd rather wait until we see how the politics play out. Frankly, I don't understand why they didn't realize you can certify an EIR and then deny the project. I mean, really, if that's what they want to do, why didn't they have the courage to go ahead and do that instead of hiding behind the lack of certification of the EIR, not articulate why they felt the EIR was so inadequate? And then, as you said, why not send the consultant back to go fix their concerns? That doesn't make any sense at all. So it's obviously a political decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Potter. Director Hoffman, I'm gonna have the last words on this, but I'll let you go first.
Well, I appreciate that. So the issue before us is whether we are standing under the CEQA. And we have legal counsel saying we don't and recommending against taking this approach. Yet, we're doing it. The only winners in this are the attorneys. And the losers are the ratepayers and the taxpayers who are gonna foot the bill for moving forward. So this is a bad idea. It's not supported by the law. We have information reiterating that, and for whatever reason, it's being ignored. I don't understand regardless of the issues with this EIR itself. I concur with some of the commenters that said we didn't like the results, so we want to take the ball and go home. That is really a professional approach to take on such an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, here's my comments. A million dollars. A million dollars. And I'm not hollering at you. I'm trying to stay calm as I can because we giving a million dollars to another public agency that's looking out for a private water company, for profit company. But here we are about to give them, well, we we engaged them 750 of it. We're about to give them 250, and don't put up a fuss though. Don't put up a fuss. No, I don't want to wait until November 3rd and pray for something to happen. I'm doing that now. I can't count on November 3rd. As a public official of a public agency, I feel we have to do something, and it's this. Now, some say what our strategy is, and the lawyer said this, and the lawyer said that. I want to try some other people in Sacramento and see what they say. And then, if the judge have to say something about it, let's take it to the judge. Let's take, I'm willing to go there. But I'm willing to get it to Sacramento and let them decide because a million dollars is a lot of money to spend other ratepayers. As our constituents out there, without doing anything, we need to at least show them we're gonna get it started. And we're gonna at least show them that, okay, we hope that you do the right thing. I think we could have did something with their 218, their Prop 218, but the people didn't want to go my way because they wouldn't got that extra 30 or 25% that they got from us. I'm probably wrong with that number. But we gave them what they needed to keep running over there. And they gave us, we're not gonna certify this. Yes, it's a possibility, but we don't have to sit down there and wait for the for November 3rd to pass. We need to take steps now. And the first step is this, and let's see how far it will go. But we don't want to do that. We sit up there and say, we will help you build, we will help you make that project work over there. And we've been doing that. 300, 3 million and 3 million dollars that we just put in for another well to make that project work. But here, we're gonna give you a million dollars, and we're gonna sit back and wait for the 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 voters to take our place. No, they elected me to make a decision, and we need to make one tonight, even though you probably won't be happy with it. We need to get the ball rolling. So since I'm gonna add the last say on this, roll call vote.
Director Hoffman?
No.
Director Adams?
Your mic, Director Adams.
Maybe that was God's way of telling me not to vote the way I was just voted.
Why didn't you vote?
Well, you know, with comments, I'm I'm going to vote no because I agree with the letter, but I just disagree with the timing.
Director Potter?
No.
Director Byrne?
No.
Director Evans?
No.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five to two.
Motion passes five to two. All right.
Excuse me. A motion failed. The motion, the motion was two in favor, five against.
Excuse me, motion failed. That's why you got the legal attorney there. Motion failed. All right, let's move on. All right, General Manager, what's next?
Okay, this item, excuse me, is a continued item from last month's board meeting. And the timing was such that we addressed this in September because we received our final of a three year collection of the user fee pursuant to the board's adopted policy from April 2016, which said, we'll collect both of them for three years to try to better understand the variability and predictability of the user fee. The nature of this item is to, well, going back up, already in the current budget year, we elected to rely on the water supply charge in its full amount for the current fiscal year 2020, 2021. So that decision had already been made back in June. Nevertheless, we're trying to set the platform for beginning to examine sunsetting relative to other needs. So the ordinance 152, which established the water supply charge, does indeed state that we we shall not collect the water supply charge to the extent alternatives funds are available via a charge collected on the California American Water Company bill. So the user fee got reinstated. It is a charge, but it comes down to the words, to the extent available. What I showed you in the attachment is Calam bills before and after reinstatement. And what's been forgotten by most people in this story is that we also collected a surcharge for mitigation on the river as well as conservation. And those two surcharges were to go away, and the user fee was supposed to cover those as normal functions of the public agency. But then that's a question of, okay, what's the surplus? And I've shown you the math for the current budget year, where those two things add up to just over 4 million, and the budget for the user fee is 4.2 million, 4.25. And we do know that last year, user fees came in in excess of the budget. So for for this point in time, the board is ultimately gonna have to address what other uses of the user fee might compete with sunsetting the water supply charge. But for now, with the completion of ASR and the potential fourth well, by the way, the bids were open today for the third and fourth deep well for pure water Monterey. The budget for the fourth well looks to be squarely within what you authorized. So I think that's a that's a positive. Nevertheless, at some point, this this board's gonna have to address the issue of how big is the surplus and how much sunsetting can be done and what are the other competing needs? Presently, the recommendation is that if collections exceed the fiscal year budget, then in the subsequent fiscal year, you may want to prioritize in the following priorities, possibly to repay reserves used to pay water supply project costs. In other words, we use reserves funded from the user fee or other sources. As of today, the amount of expended water supply charge is less than the amount of expenses on water supply projects. So there's been a buildup of an internal borrowing, if you will. Second, to deposit into a sinking fund to pay off the mechanics bank loan. Third, to build a fund that can be used to offset and sunset the water supply charge. When I say build a fund, what we, and Sirush can elaborate more on this, but if, for example, you only had 200,000 in excess and you wanted to sunset 200,000 next year, the burden of doing that across all 40,000 connections through the assessor's office who collects for us is almost not worth it. So the idea would be to try to figure out what your surplus is, track it for a couple of years, and then do a piece of sunset so that you're not coming in every year and trying to just tweak for for little tiny amounts. But anyway, nevertheless, the the important thing was understanding the history and what to the extent are available really means. And so this is a an action item based on that prioritization recommendation, but it doesn't prove anything more to sunset or offset the water supply charge.
So through the chair, I thought the original understanding and what sort of the 152 committee understood and and we sort of proposed was that really there was an expectation to sunset this in the near term, not in the long term. And I think we kind of owe it to the ratepayers and the people that have sat on the 152 committee to follow through.
Was that a question for the General Manager or somebody or comment?
It sort of turned into a comment, but it is a question because wasn't that the expectation that the 152 committee had?
Oh, absolutely. And I think we all had dreams of getting the user fee back on and that all the water supply projects would be over, so we didn't need a water supply charge. We're not really there yet because of ASR and the fourth deep well, but we're getting close. So, you know, feasibly, if we didn't have any water supply projects, and we had, you know, a big surplus in the user fee, we'd have to look at using the user fee also for our personnel and services that are related to the water supply projects. Right now, the whole water supply budget is budgeted first against the water supply charge. And then, to the extent necessary that the water supply charge isn't enough, then we pull in user fees and property tax as revenues to offset. But if you can't afford to do it, you can't afford to do it. And so I guess that's what I'm saying is, we all know that as the volumetric rates go up and the meter fees have gone up, that a percentage charge based on those two fees will eventually throw off quite a bit of revenue. And and then it'll be incumbent upon us to to limit, I mean, we, you know, we can't just bank money for the sake of banking money. But there are, you know, sensible levels of reserves. There there are things that you have identified, setting a little something away for OPEB and pension fund liabilities and so forth. So, you know, your sources of revenue are threefold. It's user fee first, water supply charge second, and property taxes third. And then we get some reimbursement for permit fees for time incurred. So, yeah, if if we had enough revenue coming from the user fee to sunset, that's what we agreed to do.
Chair Edwards, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Dave. Director Hoffman?
Hey, Dave, you know, in ordinance 152, section 10C, it is unambiguous, saying the district shall not connect a water supply charge pursuant to this ordinance in FY 1819 or any subsequent year if no district project is identified and determined by the board of any way as of December. and determined by the board have been underway as of December 31, 2017. So there's no reference to PERS and funding PERS. There's no reference to funding conservation. So based on that provision, what were the projects that were specifically identified at the time as being underway as of December 31, 2017, that will satisfy this provision of the ordinance?
Yeah, sure. And I think you may be misreading it just slightly.
I'm reading it directly from, I'm reading it directly from ordinance.
Interpreting it slightly incorrectly. That was the, if nothing happens, then stop the surcharge. So in other words, if you don't do a project, don't collect this thing. And so, but we did do a project. We started Pure Water Monterey. We elected expansion of ASR, backflush facilities. So projects were in place, and you only needed a project. But the idea of that caveat or that paragraph, that sentence, was, hey, you said you're going to go out and do projects. If you haven't identified a project by that date, then you shouldn't be collecting this charge.
Exactly. And so I recognize that the wells for ASR and the Pure Water Monterey potentially were identified then, but it seems now that all those have been funded. So again, what rationale do we have to continue to take in the water supply charge when there are no additional projects? There are, can you identify projects for water supply that were identified as in December 31st so that we can justify taking the people's money moving forward?
Well, we don't have to identify any additional projects, yet there are some. The more important question is, you can sunset it per, you know, per section 10C, sub B, to the extent alternate funds are available. Well, we funded aquifer storage and recovery through a loan to a mechanics bank. That's not been paid off, so that's an ongoing obligation secured by the water supply charge. The board is authorized contributing to a fourth deep injection well, which either has to be paid for out of pocket, which would be collections over the current fiscal and the next fiscal year, which means you're not in a position to sunset the water supply charge. We've funded the water supply projects to date at a deficit to the water supply charge. And so to the extent the board wishes to reimburse the other funds which have been used to do interfund borrowing for water supply projects, that's a continuing obligation. Many of, all of these that I'm speaking of can go away. Unrelated to water supply projects, if the board says, "In our general duties, we want to fund more of the pension liability, or we want to fund more of the OPEB on an annual basis," then that just simply means you don't have an extent alternative funds are available yet. So, you know, it's, I can move all the money from my left-hand pocket to my right-hand pocket, but it doesn't mean that I've now covered everything that, you know, that I want to do. And so that's really the charge here, which is, yes, a fee is now on the California American Water Company bill. But is it sufficient? And as of right now, the recommendation is it's not sufficient. But it's getting closer to being sufficient because there's two things happening. The user fee revenues will go up because of the increasing bills, and the demands on the water supply charge will be going down because of fewer water supply projects being constructed by us out of pocket. And we'll preferably be at a place where the mechanics bank loan is paid off. And so that continuing obligation off the water supply charge is no longer continuing. That's where the flexibility will come from.
So I have another question.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
So where exactly, in relationship to this fee, is the money coming from for all the expenses for the Measure J?
That's a great question. It's, you know, Suresh, maybe you need to chime in. I forget how you allocate it.
Yeah, it's a portion from, it's a portion from all different costs. It has mitigation, conservation, and water supply. And water supply contributes about 33% of the cost.
Water supply is funding 38% of the cost of the Measure J?
33%.
And I know the 152 committee was adamant about not having Measure J money taken from the water supply.
So Director Byrne, it's not directly coming from water supply charge. Water supply fund actually has a combination of fees going into the entire cost center. You have the water supply charge that's going into the fund. You have the user fee that's going into the fund. And then we balance the need for that project, for that fund with property tax.
Well, and what you're saying, in other words, is the money is from the water supply charge is paying for other stuff that otherwise the district would be paying out of property tax or something else. I mean, it's, in other words, the Measure J expenses are somehow being taken out of the water supply charge? Or the water supply charge is covering the deficit on other funds that you're taking the money from?
No, it's not, it's not like that. The water supply charge is not covering the deficit. Just to add to Dave's comment when he was naming the projects. For example, we had in 2019 approved $5.5 million for the ASR project. We had $1 million approved for the expansion project. We have the $4 million approved for the expansion project. So if you just add those in the last two years, we've got well over $8, $9 million worth of projects. The water supply funding, water supply charge that's coming into the cost center is only $3.4 million a year. Now, out of that $3.4 million, we assign the cost that's directly related to staff working on water supply projects and then pay for the projects itself. So the water supply charge is actually in deficit right now because we don't have enough water supply charge collection to cover for all the projects. Does that help?
Yeah. And so when you think of Measure J, what Suresh is saying, you know, these costs that are just kind of general to the district as a whole, think of election costs as another example, just get allocated to the three funds that we have. So we've got the water supply fund, we have the conservation fund, and we've got the mitigation fund. And so think of it as just general overhead that's being assigned to each of those funds. But each of those funds also get portions of revenue from property tax and user fee, some reimbursements for permit fees and so forth. And what Suresh is, in effect, saying is that while Measure J has been allocated to the water supply fund at 33%, the amount of revenue sitting in the fund from other sources than the water supply charge are more than enough to cover those Measure J expenses. So they're allocated to that fund, but they're not coming from the water supply charge.
So in other words, if we didn't have the water supply charge, we simply wouldn't be doing water projects?
Right. Like the chemical building at ASR, a contribution to the fourth deep well, those kinds of things, yeah.
Thank you.
So Dave, just getting back, see, and maybe I'm only one, but we take in money on the water supply charge, and then it's supposed to be expended. And actually, in section B of ordinance 152, it says, "Every year, the board shall review amounts collected and expended in relation to the purposes for which the charge is imposed." And so what I'm seeing and why I'm concerned about this is that we've been taking in funds, and I've not seen any spreadsheet, any chart, which says, okay, we've taken in $3.5 million for X number of years under the water supply charge, and that $3.5 million over the X number of years has gone to projects X, Y, and Z that costed X, Y, and Z. And so that there's a direct correlation between the amount of money that's been brought in as opposed to what has been necessary to pay out to satisfy the terms or provisions of the 152. And so to me, that's where the disconnect is, when you start blending all this stuff together. Just a straightforward, this is much you got in, these are the projects that we spent. That would be just so helpful, but I haven't seen anything like that.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Well, so in the current year, I mean, current, every budget cycle, we do identify the sources of revenues and the projects, and you can see them by division. So that's there. The ordinance 152 committee regular updates actually also include that backward-looking view. But you are correct in that other things are also on that same page. The letter that was sent to Mr. Tilly and the Coalition of Peninsula Businesses, I don't know, several months ago, which addressed the question of, was there even any excess to date from the water supply charge? Did just that matter? From the beginning of time, the beginning of collection of the water supply charge through the second quarter of the fiscal year, it showed all the expenditures on water supply-related items and all of the collections of the water supply charge and the reimbursement and the net difference. And it showed the net deficit since the beginning of time of collection of the water supply charge. But I do know that after one of our similar conversations on this, Mr. Laredo and Mr. Prasad and I said, you know, during the budget cycle every year, let's try to have a little more focus on this. Because if we just tell you, here's our revenues, and we need them all, and here's our expenditures, so obviously we need the water supply charge, maybe that's not enough. So we pretty much agreed, you know, after our last budget round, that we would try to do something additional during the budget cycle to do a little bit more of that accounting in a simpler-to-see way.
That would be really helpful. Thanks.
Question? Go ahead, Dave. Director Riley? Dave, the three suggestions on the categories of potential plant excess, would they have individual line items related to them so they could be tracked?
Oh, yeah, we can certainly find a way to do that. I mean, you don't see them currently in our budget. You know, well, you see debt service, but then we have to explain to you what debt service is and so forth. So, yeah, we can, we can absolutely. Okay, thank you. And also, you should keep in mind, this recommendation of priorities starts with the first priority being the budget cycle that we just talked about, which is, hey, if you need the water supply charge for projects, then you're going to adopt a budget that assumes, you know, if this, you know, the next budget year, you've got $2 million worth of water supply projects. If we don't have a $2 million surplus from the user fee, then we would fully expect you to go from $3.4 million of water supply charge at least down to the $2 million to cover what's there. If we still have the mechanics bank loan that is secured by the water supply charge, you'd still need that and so forth. So what we're trying to get to is a transitional phase where your water supply needs are less than the water supply charge. But my priorities, shown in the recommendation, are looking backwards, if you collected more user fee than we anticipated, then let's move that over here to do these things. But, you know, you still retain your authority to say, well, wait a minute, I've got other needs too. And so that user fee surplus is not what you just said it is, Dave. It's less because this year, I want to fund pension fund liability, or this year, I want to do something else. So I'm grateful that the user fee's coming in over expectation, but I've already identified some other use for that. You know, that kind of discussion is really board policy discussion. It needs to be had before you just lockstep, decide to take, hey, we collected more than we said we would, let's use it all on reducing the water supply charge or things that are secured by the water supply charge.
Yeah, and you know, Dave, if I might, Director Edwards, Dave, you know, one thing, one mechanism to assist in that is having restricted funds so that when revenues come in, go into an account that can't be used for other purposes unless authorized. And so that would then enable the board to have a better handle on where the money is coming into, under what charge, then to see if it's restricted, then how best to then allocate it. And if changes need to be made, then the board makes a decision to do that. That's the suggestion.
Yeah, and that's actually another way to get away from having to adopt priorities now and then reverse them later and so forth. You could just annually, I mean, you could create the user fee surplus account that requires certain authorizations for its use in the subsequent year. And so, yeah, you could do exactly that way. And then you could just talk about priorities during the budget cycle.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Director Evans.
Thank you. Can you tell me what, if this water supply charge is, if we decide tonight to discontinue the water supply charge, and let's just say that's effective immediately, what are we not funding this year that we anticipated funding out of that water supply charge?
Well, first of all, that's not an action item on this agenda.
I know it is not, but I'm asking.
Thank God.
To understand of the scale of this.
Yeah, we would be able to finish the ASR chemical building and pertinent features. And Suresh, step in here any time we saw.
Yeah, it'd be the, it'd be the deep injection well number four. That'd be the first one to go, even though the board has authorized it. The $5.5 million, the remainder of that, which is about, close to about $3 million left on the ASR building. So that's going to be put on hold. That won't get completed.
And there's still some additional finished work at Sleepy Hollow. But my understanding is.
No, Sleepy Hollow is from the mitigation.
Okay, good.
Dave, I would have a concern that you would be breaching your obligations on your loans.
Yeah, we'd be breach of the mechanics bank loan. You're right. Yeah, we have a revenue coverage test where the net revenues from the water supply charge need to meet a debt coverage, one and a quarter percent of what your debt is, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I take the public? Harling, let's open it up to the public for two minutes.
Tom Rowley, please present your comment.
Yes, good evening again, Tom Rowley. As someone who has been watching the budgets and the expenditures and the programs and what Monterey Peninsula Water Management District has been doing and not doing for at least 35 years, it's kind of mind-boggling. The last three years, I believe, have been record-setting. The last three years, I believe, have been record setting budgets above $15 million. In talking to former directors who served perhaps 20 years ago, even as recently as 15 years ago, these budgets are excruciatingly high. And I know you have a very, very competent financial officer, Mr. Pradesh, and you have a very good general manager at juggling budgets and numbers. And the thing is, I, I am also on the Measure X, the TMC Oversight Committee. And what we are looking for in that Oversight Committee is something that's called bait and switch. And you really have a, a classic example of bait and switch, and it's been identified. I'm glad to hear the board is questioning this and asking about this, but the bottom line is still the ratepayers and taxpayers are hit with a double whammy by having the water supply charge and the user fee. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bruno, please present your comment.
Well, good evening again. I am a member of the Ordinance 152 Oversight Committee as a representative of the Taxpayer Association. First, I want to thank you, Arlene, for bringing cookies to the meeting. It makes the meetings much more enjoyable. And also, for Dave, it is a, we enjoy the meetings from the standpoint that we learn a lot about what's happening at the district. There's a lot of good conversation goes by. Unfortunately, as far as how it interacts with the Ordinance 152, there are some of us that sound like broken records because we keep talking about how we would like to see it followed more closely. We, you know, the Taxpayer Association believes it's inappropriate to tie water charge, you know, tie a water charge to your property tax bill, does, it's not tied to water use. But we know right now at this point, this charge is not going away. We're not against expenditures, but we don't like how it's being generated, the, the income side of it. So it's not going away unless you make an effort to make it go away. And that's highly unlikely, but maybe the best thing we can do at this point, though, is, is try to take little pieces of it, like the Rabo loan. Take money to pay down the Rabo loan, not set it aside, not create a sinking fund, but take real dollars, if there's such thing as excess money, and put it towards that. Put it towards debt reduction, not operational costs and not operational needs. Because if we ultimately, if we get rid of the Rabo loan, we'll ultimately be able to address the 152 charge. It's always going to be there until that Rabo loan is addressed. So if we make that the priority, the debt reduction side of it, you know, we might actually get there in the future. Thank you.
Susan Spurley, please present your comment.
Hi, I'm on the 152 Oversight Committee myself for Division One, but I do agree with some of what Paul said. I do think we should pay attention to the Rabo Bank loan, and I think the sinking fund idea was floated to the committee last year and everybody did agree to that idea to try to start putting some money aside for that loan and start working on that. I do know the district needs money. I think we're in a time period when expenditures may be high because there are some water supply systems being built that are going to take us into the future, and it may not be the best time and it may not work out in the best way at all levels, but it is a crucial time for expanding some of these things. And, you know, we don't know what the future is going to hold. So I think you need to at least be prudent in whether you want to discontinue a source of money that you may actually need at this point. But at some point, it does need to be taken care of in terms of reducing and doing some sunsetting. But I fully support, you know, using it for what's needed. Thank you.
John Tilly, please present your comment.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for your hard work. So I'm also on the Ordinance 152 Citizens Oversight Committee. I was appointed by Bob Brower, God rest his soul, and have enjoyed every minute of being on that committee, very informative. What I see is the case where we were told as a community, when this was set up, that this would be a very short term bridge to get the usage supply fee back up. Shortly thereafter, the use supply fee came back up, and nonetheless, for many, many years, there's been this collection of the water supply charge. A left hand, right hand sort of approach to how we're going to work the budget doesn't really sound like an appropriate living up to the word of the ordinance. So I would suggest that you stop playing that sort of a shell game and start to really live up to the word of the ordinance. We were told it would go away, make it go away. And by doing so, there's a $3 million reserve in the fund. You went out and got a legal opinion saying that you could use those funds for Measure J. Keep hearing this board going off and getting legal opinions that let you do whatever you want. But in this case, it's really, it's just a really clear chance for you to live up to your word. Take the $3 million that are in that fund, no matter where they came from, they're in that fund, and pay down the Mechanics Bank Rabo Bank loan. Show us that what you're willing to do is live up to your word by doing that and showing that in the future, we can count on you to come through. It needs to be sunset. And I would also just simply like to ask that my public comments, my written communication from June of this year and again this past week be posted because it's a very concise presentation of how the 152 came in place and what we were promised as a community. So thank you very much and thank you again for your hard work.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands.
Okay, and a thank you to the last caller. Back to the board, upcoming is closed. What actually you want to take board?
So I have a question.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
On the Mechanics Bank loan, there's no prepayment penalty on that?
Correct, there's no prepayment penalty.
So instead of putting this into a sinking fund, my suggestion would be that you actually pay the loan down. It's too easy to put it into a fund and borrow from that fund later. And if you really are serious about someday being able to sunset the, the charge, it looks like that option should be an actual payment to the bank loan.
Okay, Director Adams.
Thank you, Chair. Jeanne, I agree. I'd like to see the water supply charge go away at some point. I think that we, we owe that. I do believe we need to work on water supply at this time until we have it in a place one way or another, that the community has a water supply in place for the future. And then at that time, I'd like to see that, that charge go away. I understand that if we're using this for water supply projects such as the well in Pure Water Monterey, I think that's appropriate, and maybe we should keep it around until such point that that is taken care of. But I would like to see any excess money that we have go to pay off our debt. And, and as Director Byrne said, pay it directly, not a sinking fund, just pay it down. It's, it is, there is always the temptation to borrow from funds, from reserves, there's always going to be some other need that we have that comes up, but we, we need to be responsible to the taxpayers and the ratepayers and pay off the debt that we've incurred. So that's, that's my thinking on that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Director Riley, go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna support Paul Bruno, and if he doesn't fall out of his chair.
I almost fell out of my chair.
I, I do think we ought to have an incremental approach, but the problem is that, I think, and even John Tilly's summary of issues, he neglects to say that, that a large part of our responsibility has changed since the water supply charge was first approved. So you go from 2012 to 2020, and there's just all sorts of new issues on the table and new challenges on this district and new funding obligations or choices that we have to make. And I, I, I like, I like the idea of trying to move some of the excess into a structure, but I do think it's premature to make a definitive decision tonight on whatever the excess money is. Bring it back after we set up a system to kind of account for it and bring it back. I'm going to go back to the argument that we made at the last added item where the political process may change some things going forward, and this is not one of those items that need to, need to be implemented right away, but we can do some preliminary steps. So I would like to see the, the, the recommendation be approved and then, and then move forward in an incremental way. I think we're going to be cutting off our toes or our feet and, and maybe an entire leg if we try to restrict our financing flexibility viscerally when there's so many issues on the table. I mean, I'd like to move approval of the recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion that we, you, we approve the recommendation with the caveat that instead of a sinking fund on the Mechanics Bank, that it's actually a payoff.
Yeah, I would even offer that one, one of you should just completely revise the motion to say, because you're only going to know it's excess towards the end of the year. I mean, you've budgeted for collections, but, you know, do a little bit more of what Director Hoffman suggested, which is move that excess into an account or, you know, a fund that can only be designated based on board approval. And so if your priority, you, you'd actually have a discussion, okay, how much do we have, Suresh? Okay, we got $460,000 beyond what you expected in revenues. Before you release that 460, you'd make the decision, I want it all to go to Rabo Bank or Mechanics Bank. Or, well, let's do 300 to Mechanics Bank and the other 160 for something else. That will give you more of the control that you're looking for, but maintain, but maintain the flexibility rather than, because otherwise, I think we'd be flipping the second from not just the sinking fund, but to actual paying off, but moving it from second to first ahead of repaying yourself, because it sounds like that's the priority at least this evening.
So with that caveat, if we created that specific fund, it still would include actually making a payment on the Rabo Bank loan as opposed to just having it as a sinking fund?
Well, so, well, so that's the nuance right now. We, we were trying to give you, you know, three priorities in, in an order so that something would be happening, something real would be happening. If we just went to a fund that required a future action, chances are the board could say, well, that's not my priority. By a vote of four to three, you don't pay anything on the Mechanics Bank loan. So I guess your choices are the recommendation, but flip flop the first and the second one and take away the sinking fund and just say, you know, whatever excess there is this year, we're going to pay, pay down the Mechanics Bank loan, and whatever excess there is next year, we're going to pay off the Mechanics Bank loan, because that's, that's going to use up everything of the excess, no doubt. You know, we only put $500,000 into the sinking fund in this budget anyway, so it's not a full, full one third of the prepayment, the balloon payment.
Riley, if, 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 if Director Byrne includes Dave's changes as the substitute motion or whatever, I would, I would support that.
Okay, Dave, repeat that as a motion.
Yeah, so if, yeah, if you wanted to change the, the recommendation slightly, it would be, you know, the same all the way to the, where it says following priority. So now it's a first to prepayment of the Mechanics Bank loan. Second, to reserves used, or, you know, in this case, what we meant by used was interfund borrowing for water supply project costs. Third, to build a fund that can be used to offset and sunset the water supply charge. And what that'll result in is this year and next year, you'll never get to number two, but you'll certainly be making progress on the Mechanics Bank loan, which seems to be a priority of a lot of people.
Okay, I would be fine with that.
And I'm fine too.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Chair Edwards, I have a question. I'm not clear on the third priority, Dave. Could you elaborate on, on that just a bit?
Yes, and I'm not, I'm not entirely clear we worked it correctly either. So in Suresh's expertise, the, the process of laying out this water supply charge, basically the, the whole rate study involved taking the whole and then breaking it into little pieces for everybody's assessors bill based on the type of use at that property, at that parcel. It's a very arduous process. And so Suresh had said, you know, if, if we've got an excess of $200,000, it's really not worth that particular year going through and redoing that entire allocation. And I said, well, we could let it, let it build up a little bit over time until the user fee kind of has gone up as well and escalated so that the number that had been 200,000 is, on an annual basis, is now something significant, half a million, 600,000. But, and so then, then you have a little bit of sunsetting, it'd be worth the effort to go through the, the allocation methodology. The math doesn't work if you actually build a fund up and then retire or sunset an annual fee based on three years' worth of accumulated collections, which is seemingly implied here. And that's not what we meant to do. I think what we meant to do was segregate it so it was going to be used to sunset and then let the user fee kind of catch up over three years so that we not be reducing the user, the, reducing the water supply charge every year for small amounts of money, but we would try to do it stepwise every third year or fourth year as, as the user fees now generating enough on a, on a regular basis.
So, so why, with, with the understanding of the discussion that we just had, is there really an need at this time to have anything more than just the first priority, really? I mean, because it seems like there's, we got several years of throwing money at that and that the other ones can be addressed later? That's kind of.
Yeah. I mean, absolutely, you want to address a single problem, and I know there's people on the Ordinance 152 Committee who would be satisfied with that. I mean, we need to show progress on something, number one. Number two, the loan is secured by the water supply charge, so if you, now, I know I have a director who put his finance cap on and said, well, why don't we just refinance that loan because rates are so low? And he's right. But if you refinanced it out to another 10-year balloon payment, then you have the same problem you have today, which is it's sitting out there for a number of years. It's unlikely, based on the conversation I had, I know John Tilly's on, you may have a different view, but it's unlikely we would be offered the ability to just refinance it with the same balloon payment in three years. But that's just what one banker told me.
What is, what is the balloon payment?
It's, Suresh, do you remember we had it in the staff notice, a little over 3 million?
Yeah, it's, it's close to 3 million dollars.
Okay.
Wait, 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 Director Hoffman, give somebody else a chance for a minute.
Well, I'm just going to offer a substitute motion.
Well, Director Adams wants to speak.
Okay.
Let's, let's hear.
Thank you. I always worry about tying money up too tightly so that it becomes more of a problem than anything else. So I would not support having it just be so focused. I would prefer having one, two, or three as options, and I would prefer we put it in an assignment account so that it could not be expended without the board's ability to agree to it and be in the public's eye, which I think is also an important thing to do.
I think that addresses the separate account. I think I agree with that.
Director Potter, do you have any comments? Director Potter, do you have any comments? Okay, you must be looking at the football game. Director Hoffman?
Good, I'm good, Alvin. I appreciate the discussion. You know, it's, it's a complicated issue, but I think we're coming in the right direction, so I appreciate that.
All right, I'm about to turn it over. Director Hoffman, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just offer a substitute motion that would just limit to paying off the Mechanics Bank loan and not even address at this time the other two priorities since it's gonna be several years down the road before those even come into the picture anyway. So why not make this clean? That's my substitute motion.
And I wouldn't agree with that because I like the option of having those other issues addressed.
Well, it does work to some degree in that this was a priority, so it wasn't like you could choose one of the three. It was to hit the first one first, the second one second, and the third one third.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion, but we do not have a second. Perhaps we can get a second before there's discussion.
Do we have a second on that substitute motion? If not, it dies. Okay, no second. Okay, Miss Loretto, we back on that first one?
That's correct.
So I still, I still think the three options keeps the board focused on what the subsequent funding is gonna go for. I think, I think this would be correct, and I like the first one being the Mechanics loan.
Yeah, and it'll be a prepayment rather than sinking fund.
Yes, prepayment.
Okay, so what's your motion? Miss Loretto, you got that motion wrote down? State it to the board so they understand so we can move on.
The following priority is that first calls to prepayment of the Mechanics loan, second priority, reserved for water supply project costs, and the third is to build a fund to be used to offset and sunset the water supply charge.
Motion maker, is that what you said?
Yes, that's correct.
Seconder?
And I agree.
You agree? All right.
I thought I had seconded it, but I would agree anyway.
Did you second it?
Yeah, just so you know, we're gonna try to clean up the meaning of fund so that we get that third one to be meaning what we actually meant.
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, the motion was made by, and it was seconded by Director Evans, since she leading them. Give her a little credit. Sorry, Director Riley, you make up the next one. Let's do roll call.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Wow. Well done.
That was 7-0? Oh, okay, that's 7-0, huh? Back on the winning track again. Okay, next item, General Manager.
I have nothing to do with this item, I think, either.
General Counsel? Could you lead up to this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This matter has gone past the Administrator Committee. It is called for a recommended amendment to the employment contract for the General Manager. It calls for a change in compensation, an adjustment, 5% to recognize prior cost of living increases and an additional 1%, so that's a total compensation increase of 6%. That would bring Mr. Stolt's principal salary to $246,026 on the annual basis. And also, it would increase the General Manager's managerial leave accrual by eight hours on the year. That would change his total management leave, which is presently set at 56 hours per year, to be, to 60 hours per year. All other aspects of his compensation package and benefits package would be ratified without modification. And if this is approved, the changes would take effect the first pay period that begins following the approval of this item, and therefore, the effective date would be the 19th, and it's the first pay period thereafter. Administrator Committee, review this, and I believe that the recommendation is that it be approved. That concludes my report.
General Counsel, one clarification in there. Basically, the management leave will be increased by eight hours from 48 hours to 56 hours and not 60.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, 56, yes.
You gotta take it within 60 days or whatever.
That's correct. I misread that, my apologies.
You tried to give him more. That's all right, little buddy. All right, best care.
I have a comment. I actually have to leave the meeting, but I just want to say that we appreciate you, Dave Stolt, and all your work, and appreciate the fact that you are sort of a long-term employee that has done fabulously with this district. So I'm leaving the meeting.
All right, be prepared for your next meeting this week. Director Adams?
Thanks, Jeanie.
Set a date or time in the meeting for Thursday.
It's coming, it's coming shortly. Might see it tonight.
Director Adams, you are on mute.
Yes, thank you, General Counsel.
And are you looking for acquiescence? What are we looking for here?
Okay, I'm just looking for any comments from the board, then I'm gonna take it to the public, and then we're gonna make a motion.
This is a well-deserved move, and I'm very thankful that we are fortunate enough to have Dave, and I want to make sure that we're able to provide for him in the custom to which, and the manner in which he has become a customer.
Thank you. Okay, any board questions? If not, Arlene, open up to the public for two minutes.
Dave, I'd like to thank you for your hard work. It's a tricky idea and must take a lot of brain power. I really respect you for the hard work you do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bruno, please present your comment.
Well, I'd like to say a couple kind words for Dave. I followed this district for quite a few years, and although sometimes we disagree on where things are going, he has been extremely professional, extremely knowledgeable, extremely competent, and I would say as far as he has given things done, he's probably been the best manager for the district. So I hope you continue.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Riley, please present your comment.
Congratulations, Tom Riley, congratulations to fellow line eye for getting a pay raise. His hard work, he deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I see no other raised hands.
Okay. Somebody really happy out there. That's not too bad, man. Okay, back to the board, motions?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to explain my position here. I'm gonna actually abstain from voting on this because in these uncertain times, I was part of the council in Carmel that made it very clear that we weren't confident enough that we could give anybody raises. In fact, we had our executive manager and our staff take 10% cuts, so I'm gonna abstain. I don't want to, Dave, I hope you don't interpret this as my being any form of a disrespect or lack of belief that you're doing a great job, but right now, I just cannot accept any increases when I've had to make tough decisions elsewhere. So I think you're doing a great job, Dave, but right now, I don't think it's a time for me to be supporting any raises at this time.
Okay. Do we have?
I'm of approval.
Riley, go ahead.
I'm of approval.
Hi, second, and I'm Tom.
We have a movement, a motion to approve by Director Adams and second by Director Riley on the second.
I have a comment. Just to kind of bring things up to date, we froze Dave's salary a year ago, but we did not make an improve, an increase from a year ago. So part of this increase is to cover a two-year lapse of any change at all. I'm just adding that comment.
Okay. And if I might just rebut that comment, I'm fully aware of that, but two years ago, previously, we did not have the COVID conditions on us. That's why I had to make the tough decisions at the city level. So again, I support Dave and his mission. I think he's doing a great job, but right now, I'm not giving anybody raises. So I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, that's good. Okay, Director Evans, do you have any comments?
Just want to thank Dave for his professionalism, his competence, and for being a fantastic General Manager to the district. I hope that this is enough to encourage him to stay on a lot longer.
Director Hoffman, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Well, I'm gonna have a last say on this one. Okay, I want to thank the board first for the process, and Dr. Garcia for taking us through the process, and the General Counsel for helping me out, and the CFO for giving the information for me. And I want to thank the GM for hanging on so long. He has done a great job, and like was stated, he didn't receive anything last year, and everybody else received something. So I'm gonna call for the question.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Hoffman? Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
That's five, yes, one absent, and one abstained.
Okay, it passes.
Mr. Chair, may I say a few words?
Oh, yes, you may.
I really want to thank the public speakers for their kind words, but more importantly, I'm very grateful to this board for your trust and conviction in me. It's a joy to work for a board that's informed, active, engaged, and committed, which you all are, and I very much appreciate that. And I just think it's a shame there's just not quite enough in here for me to write any more political campaign contributions to the mayor of Carmel.
Well noted, duly noted.
Okay, is that it? All right, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, and board members, please stay tuned for a special meeting probably this week. Do your homework.
Stop picking up my reading right now, Chair.
All right. Mean adjourn, have a good night.
Thank you. Bye-bye, everyone.
All right.